The regular meaning of the Bell, County Department of Bellables zoning board for June 6, 2019 will now come to order. Clerk Colerole.
Bennett. Here. Caruso.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Loza.
Here.
Pedalino.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Milano.
Here.
Del Gershio.
Here.
Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that secretary has notice of this meeting to give it in accordance with the sunshine law.
Certification of meaning has been advertised according to some monitors.
Okay, I believe Mr. Giordano wants to make a statement. He had to do that before the minutes, since he wasn't at the last meeting anyway, so he doesn't get involved.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as you know, I'm a retired double police officer. With that in mind, I would like to put on the record that when I was employed with the Bellville Police Department and the capacity of a supervisor, I was involved with incidents regarding captive church and several academy street residents. So with that in mind, and with the history of this case, I would recuse myself from it.
Okay, we realize that does not prevent you from giving testimony if you choose to do so.
I'd rather just stay out of it.
Stay out of it. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to tell you the rights system. Okay.
And I'm not going to be involved in the first case, so...
No, because you weren't here last month.
I'll be.
So basically, you can leave for the night, and that way you can switch the user chairs, and we don't have to get another chair out.
Here, take this, I'll just sit there.
But I'll sit on the high chair, you can sit on the low chair.
Stay next to me.
Stay where you are, John. Stay where you are.
Stay where you are, I'll move over there.
John, John.
John.
Stay where you are. Stay.
She's doing it easy for you. It'd be nice to have her doing it very easy.
Okay, now, let's get to who was here last month, and we'll get to the minutes. Any changes you want to make to the minutes, anybody? Changes made by Mr. Milano to approve as is. Anybody want changes, or do I get a second to approve? Second made by Mr. Caruso to approve the minutes from the May 2 meeting. Clerk Colerole.
Bennett. Yes. Caruso.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Loza.
Yes.
Pedalino.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Milano.
Yes.
Del Gershio.
Yes. Okay, first case on the agenda will be...
You know what? No. Who took my new plans? Don't send anything over to me, I'll phone right back after. Because now my plans are missing. They were right here, everybody grabs everything.
Okay, we will now continue with the case we left off on last month, which is ZB 2019 oh seven, 114, 116 Washington Avenue. The applicant is seeking approval to convert a 3,500 tenant space on the entire ground level and part of the lower level of an existing mixed-use building for an adult daycare. Mr. Gashion, I believe you have this case.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'd like to just have a brief opening, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The presentation was basically complete when I asked for an adjournment and was granted that by the Board. As a result of an issue that took place that night, that's why I asked for the adjournment, my client decided to change the proposal to add a lift in the rear of the building for anyone who because of some physical disability could not use the stairs. Normally, the front entrance is available to all and at street level, but there could be a situation where there was no parking available in front, and therefore, there was a concern by Board members and by my client with regard to what could be done. The amended plans were submitted, and I'd like to recall Suzanne Taverre to discuss the amendment, which is the addition of a lift. Suzanne?
This client, who were sworn in on May 2, as an architect, I'm assuming that you're still an architect, and if you are, you're still under oath.
Did you, as a result of the last hearing in this matter, make a substantial change
to the plans by adding a lift at the rear entrance?
I did.
And was that change submitted to the Board?
It was.
Would you describe that change for the benefit of the Board and any interested citizens in the audience?
So, the plans that you received show the lift here at the back of the building, right next to the stair that's existing. We pushed it away from this platform because there is a door down here, so people will be able to walk underneath our new platform if they need to get down here or right onto the lift and up.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is the lift going to block the window for the downstairs parking?
No.
Okay.
So, if you see the elevation here, the lift is going to go in this...
Oh, right there, okay.
Right here.
All right, and those are the windows that are currently there.
Correct.
All right, so it's not going to block any. Very good.
Nope, it's not going to block the doors, not going to block any window.
How many people could fit on the lift at a time?
This is the lift, so I can attest to how many.
Well, what's the capacity? Doesn't have a capacity on it? It's usually one. One?
One.
Okay. All right.
This is a picture of the lift if you...
If you're going to have that, we're going to have it.
Where did we leave off with evidence last month?
That should be eight-three, I believe. Is that correct, Michelle?
You're correct.
And Counselor, the amended plans were submitted, so they do not have to be more, am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
There's a few more, so we can distribute them.
Oh, okay.
Make it easier.
All right, good. I'm assuming they're the same.
Yes.
All right. I have no further ones. Is there any more testimony?
There is not, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, I'm sure you do.
Mr. Milano has questions.
Yeah, so, well, this, when I, I don't know if she would be the best person to ask. My question is, when this is in operation, will there be a worker up in them, I don't know if, one on and when it gets up, one off?
They will only have my client's...
Yeah, they never need that again.
Yes, there will be someone out. Why don't you?
Much go forward, please.
I've been over. Mario, you recall that you were sworn in at the last hearing?
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
You were also sworn in on May 2, if you're still under oath.
Yes.
And you were Mario Milan, the applicant.
Yes. And you heard the question from Mr. Milano with regard to someone assisting or being available to help anyone who needs to get on the lift?
Yes, there will be someone on the bus to help them out into it, and it will be someone upstairs to receive them.
That's exactly right.
There's only key control anywhere, nobody just have access to operators.
So, just to be clear, someone helping on, and when he reached the back, someone helps him off.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Stay there, don't go anywhere yet, because there's one more concern that I have with this application. Mike, this is, I assume, an electronic lift?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is, and this is only for safety reasons, I'm not trying to be a stickler, I feel that over the steps and over this lift, that there should be a canopy.
The lift comes with a canopy?
I'm talking about the steps too, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the steps, we have taken steps, actually, recommended to actually put...
Put a canopy to cover all the steps, so when the winter, when it snows...
I also got permission from the current owner to do it as well.
Okay, I want to make that as a condition, that's one.
No objection to that, Mr. Chairman. My client planned to do it.
Over the stairs, and there's also canopy over this?
Yes.
The canopy over, it comes as a part of the product. The canopy over the side, my understanding, the canopy over the stairs will obviously be installed by my client.
Well, the reason I'm talking about this is, let's say there's a heavy snowstorm, and we need this, and we need this. My point is, will the weight of the snow cause a problem with the mechanism?
Of the lift itself?
Yes.
No, it's meant for exterior, we use.
Okay, I'm just concerned about that.
Yeah, the force of it is actually significant for the inside and outside.
I assume it is, but I hate when problems turn up, that's why.
No, that was one of my concerns with that.
And the canopy will cover the complete length of the stairway, all the way to the bottom?
Yes, all the way to the bottom.
Okay, I'm happy with that now. Any other members of the Board have any other questions of either witness? Okay, is there any other witnesses?
No, Mr. Chairman. Again, my case was basically complete when the problem came up, and we adjourned to address it.
Any members of the public have questions of either witness? Okay, then you may sum up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, one more thing. Any members of the public wish to give testimony on this case? None? Okay. One.
I have one question.
One question by Mr. Caruso.
How many parking places are you going to have?
We have 14 parking spaces.
No, you don't.
What the testimony was.
How many ten places you have? Let's go over the parking space.
Ah, I can't...
I was there three days...
I can only go by the testimony.
Checking it out, and the most you can get is 10.
Okay, Mr. Caruso, let me call the site engineer up to the stand, if I would.
Yes, you may, and I believe he's also been sworn in already.
Mr. Stewart, please. Give it for now, I may need you again.
Also, Mr. Haritz was sworn in, I believe, on this case also, correct? He had sworn them all in?
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. Haritz, what did you find as the amount of parking spaces?
I don't recall.
You don't recall?
I know 14 were proposed.
Yes, 14 were proposed, I remember that.
All right, Mr. Stewart, Charles Stewart, you were still under oath from the May 2 meeting, you were qualified as an engineer planner, if that's still your thing, then you're good to go.
Yes, exactly. Mr. Stewart, you heard your question, and Mr. Caruso with regard to the number of spaces, I believe you may have testified that there were 14. Can you review your testimony?
All right, you tell me where you're going to have the ten.
Let him talk first. John, let him talk first.
Okay. The applicant is allocated 14 spaces in the parking lot behind the building. That's what he's, that's what he's, there's a parking lot behind the building that has 35 parking spots. 35. The applicant is allocated 14 of those spaces.
I got a map here of all the spaces. I count 27. Marked 27 spaces.
They have numbers in them?
Yes.
Have you been to the site, sir?
I have, yeah.
It shows you have seven parking spaces down the middle and three down the end. That's 10. Where are you getting your blood to them?
There was a, there's an aisle in the center also.
Where? They're all reserved, all the spaces along the fence and along the northern side, the eastern side, all reserved.
So we're working on the same...
Yeah, because we don't have that in, we don't have a plan.
No, we don't, all it says is on the plan, it shows the parking lot in the rear.
I drew a sketch of all the parking areas.
And I know that he's allocated 14.
I've been three days over there.
I was called that by the applicant, I didn't go and actually see his...
You didn't go?
I've been in that parking lot, I've seen that parking... But he didn't see the lease, is what he said. I didn't see the document that says...
Did you count the amount of spaces that were there?
I did, I have, in my notes, I have that there was 35 spots. And, but practically, he only has how many employees?
How many vehicles are you going to have on the site? It's not that many.
Yeah, he's only got a couple of vehicles.
How much do you have to count, right?
We're not.
Eight?
We don't need 14 spaces, we don't even need 10 spaces. He needs five spots, is what he needs.
What?
You have eight on the left, and eight on the right, and four in the back, and seven down the middle, that counts as 10.
Okay.
I mean, I, three of them I'm counting as 10, because there's a shrewd bearing, there's three of them for that, and seven down the middle is 10.
Now, with the seven down the middle, double spaces?
No.
Single spaces? Single spaces?
Yeah. Right now, there's a car parked there.
Google shows 35 spots, yeah. He says that Google Maps shows 35 spots. Your engineer says that Google Maps shows 35 spaces. And he only needs five spots, and he's allocated 14.
All right, but we're going to put that as the condition of 14.
Yes.
I just want to...
He doesn't need 14, I don't agree with him.
I'm just saying, if he's saying he has 14 allocated, what's the problem then, Mr. Gashion?
I don't know what's going to happen in the future, just... Well, neither do I, so, you know what? It's got to be in there. Go ahead.
The question I had.
I do not agree that it has to be in there when there's no need for it. Why should they be...
Well, then why don't you testify that you're going to have 14 spaces?
That's what the client said, 14 spaces.
Well, then that's it, he's got 14 spaces. Now, why are you changing it now?
I'm not changing anything, I don't think it should be a condition, is what I said.
What's shown on the submitted plans?
It says 14.
So whatever's submitted, stays, you can't change.
I didn't say it was changed, I just said it shouldn't be a condition, that's the plan.
What are you bitching?
In my note on the minutes, it says 14 spaces designated... Okay, I read it, again with my client, the lease says 14 spaces.
Okay, so the lease says 14, that's a condition.
But the use of it or not is up to you.
Yeah.
You have 14 on the plan.
Right.
He typically, he typically needs five.
Yeah, because of the simple reason, number one, you may have more buses, you may have more employees, anything. So, he's submitting it for 14, it stays at 14.
He's submitting it for 14.
Okay?
I may.
Go ahead, do your thing.
So, I think we addressed the lift in the back, we addressed the parking lot, the other thing we haven't solidified is the drop-off in the front, that's all I want to solidify.
That's what I want to solidify as well.
Okay.
Especially what I saw earlier today this morning.
Well, you and I talk, you know, what I've observed.
Again, I'll ask Mr. Stewart to testify with regards to it, but we can drop off from the front or the back.
Why don't we find out what the problem was, Mr. Stewart?
I don't...
I don't know what the problem was, I wasn't there this morning.
This morning, there is another adult daycare center on Washington Avenue, north of this property, by the Taco Bell. This morning, I drove by there, they had the big vans parked in parking spaces, and they had the little vans that he's planning to use here parked in the right north lane, blocking traffic. I mean, the traffic was crazy at that time. They had three of them parked in the lane, and then two big ones parked in the parking spaces in front of the building. We cannot have this again on the south end of Washington, it's just not safe.
That's what I'm talking about.
But the testimony was that at 7:00 a.m., there were no cars parked in front, and that's when he would use them. If there are cars parked in front, he's going to go to the back, the rear.
That's what we're trying to solidify about.
That's what the plan is.
Because the reason me and I, I had experience to say, and they were not even parked, the curb, they're parked in the middle of the first lane, okay? And when I peeked to go around, and I had a good morning, that wasn't a good morning, okay? So, I'm just trying to prevent...
Well, again, we're not going to have full-size buses, we're having minivans.
Right, and...
That's what they had, was minivans, but they had the minivans parked next to the full-size buses, blocking the northern right lane of Washington Avenue, causing a lot of traffic.
Again, Mr. Lopez, the testimony is, we're going to be there early in the morning, the testimony was that there were pictures taken numerous times at that hour, there were no cars parked, and again, if there are, we have the rear access, which is not a problem.
And now with this lift, it's even better.
The testimony is, well, I want to make sure we're clear on the one, the testimony is, if the spots are not available...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the...
I don't know, I heard somebody else talk about it.
If the spots are not available, my client will have the drop-off in the rear, you make it a condition if you want.
That's all, that's all.
That, I have no objection to that.
I just don't want to...
There will be no double parking on Washington Avenue, that drop-off or pickup, any of the...
I would hate to agree with you, I've been through there eight o'clock in the morning, that's awful. I am, but we also have the back, something they don't have.
They actually do have access to the back of their, because they park their vans back there.
On us...
And behind Washington Avenue, right next to the Taco Bell, they have parking in the back, because that's where they park their vans. I don't understand why they choose to drop off people on Washington Avenue in blocked lanes, they should be pulling them to the back, but that's not...
We just don't want to repeat the same.
We just don't want to repeat it.
Yeah, right.
That's kind of why we bring it up.
So that's an enforcement issue, and my client doesn't want to...
But your client understands...
The way you just want to make sure we don't add to it.
He understands that there's no parking available, he goes to the back. Right?
Yes.
Yes. I have one more comment. You told us at the last meeting that you can park on the corner from that sign to the corner, well, anyway, you can't park there at the yellow curb and across the wall, you cannot park there, you get a ticket. So you better withdraw that taking.
No, we made that clear, that we knew it wasn't a parking space. He said that temporarily, for a minute or two, to drop somebody off or pick somebody up, that would normally be available. He didn't indicate that was a legal parking space, understood it was not. That's correct.
Well, I remember something, Mr. Gashion.
I know something.
If you're bringing, if you're bringing a minivan, and a minivan has 10 people, it's not for a minute or two we get the 10 people off.
Again, if there's nothing available in the front, we will use the rear.
Okay. You have no problem with that being a condition, I have no problem with that.
No, I said I did not.
Okay.
I have nothing else. How many parking spaces we agree on now?
14, 14, John, it's all settled.
Where are you going to get the other one?
Don't worry, it's there.
There's 35, Tom Haritz said there's 35.
Howie gets it, his burger.
Haritz is our expert.
He has to have 14.
Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
Howie gets it, it's not that bad.
Okay, we have any other questions, my members of the Board?
I have one, just a follow-up question. During last month's testimony, you indicated that the clients attending your facility will be ambulatory, you're not going to allow any people who have wheelchairs or have other ambulatory problems to attend your facility, is that, am I correct?
I wouldn't say the phrase "allow."
Yes.
He wouldn't say that. Not the word "allow," he doesn't, he doesn't think he has the facilities to accommodate those kind of people, so he will not be...
But now we do, because we added the chair.
Well, that's what, now that you've got the chairlift, are you going to start bringing in people who do have actual locomotor problems?
Yes, I got to go to a hospital with the, with the, with the help, but yes, it will be fine.
Again, I don't think at this point he has the licensing for that, just so we're not making that representation. Am I correct?
So you would have to apply for additional licensing to that people who have, need wheelchairs or other devices to help them move about?
Yes.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Mr. Gashion, the center lane where you're going to have assigned parking for your group, there are cars that are not registered, no license plates on them, stored there, a dump truck from Newark is stored there, a van from Costa is parked there, what are you going to do with that car?
In their spaces, in their assigned spaces?
Yeah, their spaces.
We are tense. When my client starts operating and has a need for those spaces, he certainly will go to the landlord and say, "I got my lease, it says 14 spaces."
Right, I agree.
Right now, they actually don't want us...
And that's a case for the police department, really.
Well, it's not...
Listen to me, he's said the right thing, he goes to the landlord, and then it's for the landlord to either move these to other spaces or get them out of there.
It has nothing to do with the police. Okay, okay, are we satisfied now? Any other questions, my members of the Board?
One more. Even though the, this is maybe two years away, most of the Board members here are probably aware that the Department of Transportation recently conducted a seminar in this room on May 23 to discuss complete renovation of Washington Avenue.
Now, not a while.
Now, we're, all right, well, I think our chairman is aware of some of those...
I'm aware the meeting took place, but I did not attend it, I forgot a little about it.
No, I attended, absolutely.
Okay, but the whole thing is, that doesn't have anything to do with the parking lot in the back?
No, it wouldn't, but it may impact what goes on in front of the building, because it's my understanding, I wasn't able to directly attend the meeting, but I got some of the documents from one of the engineers, they're going to modify Washington Avenue such that instead of having four lanes, two lanes on each side, it's going to be whittled down to one lane with a shared turn lane in the middle, they're going to be putting bike lanes in close to the sidewalks, so the whole, the whole geography of Washington Avenue is going to radically change.
They do, they do on Mount Prospect Avenue in Newark, it's the most ridiculous thing that's...
Essentially, it's going to emulate what's on Mount Prospect, and I wonder how...
But you don't even know if that's going to be done technically.
We know, but I know it's a hypothetical, but they're planning for two years to start this project, and it could have a profound impact on operations like this daycare center.
I agree with you, but since he has the backyard where they're going to be parking the vans, even after they unload them, I assume they're going to be parking there until the people go home, okay? They can bring them in from the back.
It may be the case in the very near future, they'll have no choice...
If anything, maybe the town should repave that street, because it's got a thousand apartments on it, but that's...
He may have no choice in the very near future, have all of the patients come in and out through the back, he might not be able to do anything.
So my reason for bringing it up is because I am aware that that's coming, and that's going to happen, so the ability to be able to offload and load in the back is ideal for your business.
Of course, the ability to state, to state in New Jersey to execute their plan might take a lot more than three years.
Okay, any other questions? None? Questions by members of the public? Any additional testimony by any members in public?
Anybody outside?
Mr. Gashion, would you wish to sum up?
I do, briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board represent the applicant, Mr. Milan, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. Use involved variants is convert thirty-five hundred square feet of space on the ground floor at 114 Washington Ave. To an adult daycare center. If the applicant is approved, all the clients will be transported by mini-buses. In the morning, the proofs reflected that there's no problem dropping off. If there is a problem, my client agrees to a condition that says the drop-off would have to be in the rear. The parking for the applicant and his employees or anyone else on a lot the landlord owns on Greenwich Street is available. The lease says fourteen spaces, and I understand the variants will say fourteen spaces. The proposed use is inherently beneficial, and therefore, the only issue should be the negative criteria. Now, when you're dealing with inherently beneficial use, it means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such use includes hospitals, schools, et cetera. If the use is held to be inherently beneficial, it is presumptively satisfying the positive criteria for the grant of a used variance. There's gonna not be a problem most of the time with drop-off in the front at 7:00 a.m., but if there is, we'll go to the rear. The pickups may always have to be in the rear because there is not probably going to be enough area to park in the front. But we now have agreed to a covered stair. We have agreed to a lift. The lift itself has a cover panel. So I think the proofs have been sufficient to allow this application, and certainly, there's no harm to the intent and the purpose of the zone plan should it be approved, and certainly, no substantial detriment, there is no detriment, to benefit to the community to have a senior care facility at this location to take care of the elder citizens of the town. And I thank the board for their time and attention.
Okay, can we go over the conditions? So far, do we have?
Yeah. The conditions that I had from the last meeting were obvious Department of Health licenses. I don't think anything's to be a condition, can't operate without them.
Okay.
Same with regard to ambulatory and non-ambulatory clients. Those, go with that. As far as tonight's concerned, we talked about, in addition to normal conditions, a canopy or cover over stairs and the lift, the entire London stair.
Yes.
The assisting people, if you want that in there as a condition.
I want, yeah.
Okay. Assisting people getting on and off.
Against two people.
Okay. We have our condition in terms of starting whatever they need to do with it within two years. Fourteen parking spaces. Drop-off in the front. However, if issues arise, which is, who knows? But then, we're talking about a drop-off in the rear. I don't know if the board wants to get into any triggering, would trigger that, but it may be difficult.
No available spot? That's it. That's the trick. No one's got a spot in the back, in the front, you're gonna back. I don't need another trick.
And I have one additional condition.
Yep.
No CO is to be issued until these conditions are met.
That's not our call, that's his.
I think that's gonna be our call from now on.
No, we do that anyway, Jack.
Well, then I gotta talk to you after the meeting.
Well, that's Mr. DiLorenzo.
Because there's been some complaints made.
That's, that's, I don't want, that's Mr. DiLorenzo's call, not ours.
Mr. Milano, all right.
But don't go, keep going, no, it's not ours.
All right, so that's the motion, those are the conditions. The applicant would need five votes to proceed with this application. Five votes for approval.
Motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Milano, seconded by Ms. Loza. Clerk, call the law. She'll be voting on this, because she participated in this one.
Bennett?
Yes.
Caruso?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Loza?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Milano?
Yes.
Joe Gershia?
Yes. Okay, approved seven to nothing.
Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, then the next case on the agenda would be ZB 2019-02, 125 Academy Street, St. Mary's, St. Purchase Church. Sit up here. I don't care if you sit down, you gotta sit somewhere up here. Somebody may be calling on your protester.
I have false notes.
Gassion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Have you contacted your adversary?
Probably my adversary.
I am your adversary.
Well, I would do your adversary.
I hear a big water.
Forgive me, Mr. Chairman, my name's Andrew Schwartz, I'm with Sills, Commissar.
Hold on, hold on. No, no, no. I think the question to Mr. Gassion was whether he's heard from Mr. Fiorenzo or?
I had talked to Mr. Fiorenzo's secretary last Thursday morning, I believe. He had a misunderstanding, he thought the case was last Thursday night. I advised him it was tonight. And obviously, Mr. Schwartz is here.
Mr. Fiorenzo has a conflict, but I'm hearing his stuff.
Okay. And tonight, what is your understanding of what we're doing tonight?
I'm ready to proceed. Counselor may have some objections, but I'm ready to proceed.
Okay.
We're okay. Let's go.
You have no problem, let's proceed.
No.
Why don't I get your name first, Counselor?
Sure, it's Andrew Schwartz, S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z.
Schwartz, and you're here representing the objector?
Correct.
And it was an issue, the last time we met, Mr. Fiorenzo raised.
Two issues, notice and res judicata.
Which I felt at the time and I felt now was not anywhere near relevant. And the issue of notice, and since the last time, I think Mr. Gassion literally went crazy with regards to the notice, and it seems to cover everything. So in my view, the notice is fine, res judicata is not in play. You're ready to proceed, Mr. Gassion's ready to proceed.
Do you have any problem with the notice?
I'm not aware of any issue with the notice as of tonight.
Okay.
Same question, if I could, Counselor. Is there any argument with regards to res judicata?
Well, look, my understanding on res judicata is that Mr. Fiorenzo has joined that issue, and we reserve on that issue. And if the board has decided they're gonna proceed anyway, it's over our objection on it.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem with res judicata.
Well, then, if there is an argument, if they're retaining, as I understand it, you're no longer objecting to the notice, you're satisfied with the notice. You're retaining the argument with regard to res judicata, correct.
And he'll argue it out and deny that he's available?
Correct.
Okay. Then that's what I would do, I would continue with the case. I don't see no problem with res judicata. Unless you think there's a problem.
I just would like to go on the record with regard to res judicata, if you don't mind. If that's not a problem for you, go right ahead.
You have no problem?
Mr. Gassion, if I would, there is a case behind you, and in fairness to that applicant, could you give us a full game plan as to what you intend to do tonight?
Yes.
How far you intend to go?
Well, I could continue to complete the case, but I don't expect with Counselor asking questions as the cross-examination, that I'll go to complete the case. I have all my witnesses here, ready to finish, but I don't think that will occur.
Okay. Then in that case, if you're gonna go on with all your witnesses here tonight?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Just interesting, because a question came up by another attorney. ZB 2019-05, which is number three on the agenda, 417, 457 Main Street. Counselor, I might as well let you know, I don't think we're gonna reach it tonight.
Okay, thank you. My name is James Delia from the Welsh University.
Okay.
Thank you. What date would we be carrying?
The next date would be July 10th, 2019.
I'll make sure that's good with all my witnesses, July 10th.
Gina, how are we on, was notice proper for tonight for this case? Did you notice for tonight?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay. Let's have it carry without notice.
So you know that's on a Wednesday, not a Thursday.
Okay.
That's because of the Fourth of July holiday.
Thank you very much, we will see you then, enjoy your food.
Thank you. Okay, so, anybody in the audience who's here for ZB 2019-05, 417, 457 Main Street, Riverside Gardens, applicant is seeking approval for their forty-four units to be adjusted to forty-seven units at the said property. That will be adjourned to Wednesday, July 10th, 2019. There'll be no further notices in the newspaper or in the mail. Thank you. Now you may proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Prior to my opening comments, I would just like to address the question raised by opposing counsel at the first hearing. Although Mr. Schwartz says not, he says that's being left open. I just wanna go on the record and say, during the course of the previous case, there was a court decision by Judge Edith Payne where she said, "The matter is dismissed without prejudice. Defective notice deprived the defendant of the zoning board of adjustment of jurisdiction to render the February 2012 decision." And that order was directed, there was a letter directed to Mr. Fiorenzo from the court with regard to that. And if the board did not have the authority to render the decision, then there cannot be res judicata attached to it. So, there is no res judicata issue based on the fact that there was no final decision. The decision was that it was void ab initio, and that kind of language was in the resolution of the board after being directed by the court with regard to it. And they said there is no res judicata effect. That was in the resolution of the board. In addition to that, I believe there is substantial change to the plans, I'd like to call Mr. Steck to go on the record with regard to that change.
I have a copy, so you know, of the revocation hearing dated March 6th, 2014. Copy of the resolution. And I haven't sold a part about res judicata even in here yet. I'm not saying it's not here.
Well, the copy, you may have.
You have a copy?
My, I don't have a signed copy. I have a copy that appears to be, I couldn't get a signed copy out of the board office. So you have the signed copy, then you have more than I do.
Would you like to review this?
I would like to see it if I could.
As long as you can give it back.
It has exactly the language I said.
Oh, uh.
Yeah. It is resolved that the approval here to foregranted is hereby revoked, and the decision here to for rendered is hereby declared to have been void ab initio, and to have, and to have had no effect in law or fact such that there is to be no res judicata effect on the merits of any new application.
Okay, I didn't realize it was there, okay.
Counselor. Thank you.
That way you can.
I'll give it back to the chairman.
And if we have to, I'll have our secretary make a copy for you, if that's okay, sir.
That will be all.
Okay.
Matter of fact, you know what, Gina, we have that upstairs, right?
All right, all right, let me check the folder, am I on there?
Okay. Anything to help out? Okay, Mr. Gassion, I think that sums up the part about res judicata.
Well, I still would like to go on the record if Mr. Steck is available, just to complete the question as to the differential in the plans. It said it was not a final decision, no res judicata, that's what the board said. That is apparently what was said by the court, but also, there is substantial change in the plans. And in view of the fact that it's been raised, I'd like to completely dispose of the issue.
So it's for the limited purpose of the difference between the prior?
Only reason I'm calling Mr. Steck at this time.
Okay. And Mr. Steck, I assume is gonna be giving testimonies of plan?
He is.
Okay, Mr. Steck still has his license.
Mr. Steck, are you a licensed planner of the state in New Jersey? I am.
We can cut to all the nonsense because he's been here a hundred times. Somebody raise your hand, please, Mr. Steck. With regard to this application's use for the testimony, you shall give with regard to res judicata to show me the truth.
I do.
Okay, and you're a licensed planner, you've been here before?
He's giving testimony on the substantial changes.
Yes.
Not res judicata.
Right, changes. Changes, which support no res judicata.
Mr. Steck, did you, as a result of a request made to you by me, review the current plans and compare them with plans from the previous application? I did. And as a result of that review, did you prepare a chart reflecting what you consider the difference? I did. And can you, for the benefit of the board and the interested citizens, review those changes? Yes. Would you please proceed? Do you wanna have this marked?
Yes. It should be A1.
A1 would be the most.
A2.
Okay. A2.
A2.
You got one? Let's go back to Mr. Pedolino. Look at him. This place is quiet.
Thank you.
Now that I've distributed these, it's marked into evidences A2. Now that I've given everybody the copies to review, including opposing counsel, could you please review your submission?
Yes, A2 was prepared by me. It's dated June 5th, 2019, and it consists of two pages on one double-sided document. By way of background, on the initial application, which was ZB 2011-03, I was the planner who testified on that, so I have firsthand knowledge of the plans that were strictly proposed and approved by the board at that time. Initially, since the case was not adjudicated, the board did not make a decision on it. In my opinion, even if the applicant submitted the exact same plan, the issue of res judicata would not be an issue because there was never a resolution, a decision on the application. And to be more cautious, I wanna just emphasize to the board what changes are made in the application. And what you have in front of you on the first page of A2 is a simplified diagram of the proposed development where I've highlighted in red zoning items that have changed since the initial application. And I'll start on the upper left-hand corner and kind of circulate around the site plan. So, north is to the top of the page. So on the west side, the original building, if you recall, it was a circular building at the time that had parking in it and then facility space above it. But on the west side, there was initially a five-foot setback to the building. Although this plan has parking at the grade level, this building is eighteen feet away, so a substantial change in improvement in the setback. On the front setback of the new building to Academy Street, the plan was modified during the course of the application, and at the time of the applicant sought its approval, there was a 9.5-foot front setback. This proposes 18.1 feet. The prior building had several levels of parking, and because it was in a circular format, the parking spaces were a little bit pie-shaped. So the closest lines of the parking spaces of all those spaces, except for the handicap, were eight and a half feet wide. These parking spaces in the building are nine feet wide. The prior application, while both applications involve demolishing a portion of the existing facility, this application is requesting that an additional part of the building be demolished, and that's shown in red. That was part of the prior application, it is being removed. The prior application had a two-way driveway by Academy Street that was close to where the current facility is. No driveway is there in this plan. There is a parking area on the east side that was thirty spaces, that has been increased to thirty-three spaces. Going now around to the other side of the property, prior application had a total of 126 parking spaces, both surface and in the building. This has 109. There's not a significant difference or a substantial difference, but there is a difference in building lot coverage. The prior was 42.3, and we're proposing 43 percent. What drives the parking is the assembly area in your ordinance. And the prior assembly area in that large circular building was 3,320 square. And the prior assembly area in that large circular building was 3,320 square feet. This assembly area is 2,233 square feet. And finally, in terms of the height of the proposed new building, the prior building was four stories above ground and a fifth story as a lower parking level. So if you, for the moment, don't look at the fact that a basement level is not a story, that prior building was essentially a five-level building. This building is essentially a four-level building, meaning three stories above ground and a parking level at the basement level. On the flip side of A2 is, at an approximate scale, the prior building on the top and then the new proposal at the bottom. Certainly different styles, but again, a different height in terms of where the number of stories proposed, clearly a different shape. So, for all of those reasons, even if there, in my opinion, was a decision, let's say a legitimate denial of the application, in my opinion, there are substantial enough changes that the applicant would be exercising his rights to have this heard again.
I have no further questions, this way.
Any questions, both lovers and the board? Clark, can I ask you a question? Of this paper you've given, given us, on the back, are we using the back too as part of it?
Yes, that's what he just testified, the latter part of it.
My question is, is on the back. On the back, it says the maximum height on the old building was 55 feet.
The plans that were initially submitted on the old, on the old building didn't measure the height, at least on the plans, from the average grade level, but these are approximate to scale. And, and I'll say that the, the height that is proposed still exceeds the ordinance, except that the shape is so dramatically different, you really can't compare. Just giving you one dimension of the height doesn't really give you a description of what is going on. But the application, both applications involve an application for a height variance. The one thing that I want to explain is that the other building, as you can see, had two levels of parking underground, but the plans that are reproduced in front of you measured the height to one of the parking levels, and it did not measure it to the average grade, which is what the ordinance required.
All right, so let's, let's get down to basics. The prior one was four stories plus a lower parking level, am I correct?
Well, actually, there were two lower parking levels, because it was circular. There was a total of five levels in the building.
Okay.
Four levels, there was a total-
Was three levels parking, because on the back here, you have level 102, I assume that's 102 parking spaces?
No, that's-
Oh, and it's elevation?
Yeah. What I wanna say, on the backside of A2, I'm just, I'm providing this not for a definitive height measurement comparing old and new.
All right, but you're showing here three levels of parking, if I'm reading this right.
Uh, no.
Parking level 84, parking level 92, and parking level 102.
There were, on the old application, there were three parking levels.
Okay.
Because if you remember, it circled down-
Circular, I remember it was circular.
And that's why when you took a cross-section, for the first three levels, you came across parking.
Okay. Okay, this is not gonna be circular at all.
This will not be circular at all.
And, and if I'm correct, on the previous one, there was only one way to go in and out, am I correct? Where this one has two ways.
I'm reluctant to, to, I think you are right, but I'm reluctant to say that without looking at my plans again.
Oh, I'm going by this, right in front of you.
Well, the question is-
I only see a way to go in from the left, am I correct?
What I have to recall is if there was any other access point in the rear, I don't think so. I think you are correct.
No, there was no access, I remember, everything was on the gas.
So, then you're right, everyone had to come out of, well, no, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, but I think you are right. It was, I, I can look at the plans that are on my computer and verify that.
Okay, so you can do that from when you come back?
Yes.
I'm sure you'll be back.
Thank you.
Any other questions based on this? Do you wish to ask questions?
I have a few questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Steck, I'm correct, you, it is your opinion that the building lot coverage has not changed substantially?
That's correct.
And as far as you know, the use of the building has not changed at all.
The type of use that is proposed, meaning primarily a youth center, has not changed.
And in terms on the second page of A2, while the design has changed, and it's difficult to read on this copy, I, the measurement of height on the old plan was, if I'm reading this right, 55.3 feet.
That was not the technical measurement, because there were, first of all, different elements. As you can see, there were, there were smaller towers that exceeded the height of the main dome. So, I'm, I'm providing the backside more to give the board a recollection of the style of the building. Both buildings exceeded the maximum height limit by more than 10 feet and 10 percent. They were D6 variances, although as you can see, there is a dramatic design change, and the, the current plan correctly measures the height from the average grade to the surface of the flat roof. In the prior plan, there was a lot of debate because there were different building elements.
And is it your position, then, that the cosmetic change here in the design constitutes a substantial change in the plan?
Uh, no, that's not my position. I say, all of the, on the, on the page one of A2, everything in red, in my opinion, constitutes a substantial change.
Except for the building lot coverage, which we just went for?
Yes.
I, we will reserve our further questions for the planner, including on the issue of change as necessary when he testifies on full application.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd prefer a decision be made now and not reserved. That's why I presented Mr. Steck at this time. That's why I made my argument about the content of the court decision. That's why I made my argument about the content of the previous resolution. I think it's dispositive of the issue, and the issue should not be left open at this time.
I respectfully disagree that it's dispositive of a legal issue, that may be one for the court to take up as to what constitutes res judicata. Respectfully, the board may believe there's no res judicata, but ultimately, that's an issue that maybe the court will have to rule on. One witness testifying as to approximately a dozen differences may not, he may believe constitutes substantial change, but ultimately, lot coverage hasn't changed, the use hasn't changed, the requirement for a variance of height has not changed. The fact that there's certain cosmetic changes here in terms of shape and structure under the law may not constitute substantial change, particularly to the lengths that the parties had to go on your application and for the objectors to oppose it, to wipe out the prior proceeding entirely and come back with something you call new, will remain to be seen once the testimony is in.
I understand that you can appeal whatever you want, but there was not a final decision. That in and of itself is enough to avoid res judicata. Because I expect you to appeal, that's why I put Mr. Steck on, to go further and show all the changes, which based on the history of the cases that I am familiar with having to do with res judicata, is more than sufficient on its own to defeat the res judicata argument. So I think there are two bases for which the, the board could decide that there's no res judicata. One, no final decision, two, the substantial changes.
Obviously, I understand the order that I was shown in waiting for a copy of, regarding no final decision, but again, there was substantial testimony, there were substantial proceedings, including up here and in court, and there are, there is case law that would deem such to invoke res judicata in this situation, where a, an applicant goes so far only to withdraw at the last minute.
That was a factual circumstance.
Can I interject here, and I hate to do this, but I've heard these cases before with res judicata. Matter of fact, this board has imposed a lot of different cases. And my question, my question is, I'm asking two learned attorneys here, plus a planner, plus a planner.
Let me ask our attorney.
All right? And I can ask our attorney. But am I not, am I not, am I not correct?
He was only dealing with learned attorneys.
Am I not correct that, once the judge ruled that the original project that we heard, and you're right, it was for extensive period of time, I'm not gonna argue with you on this, okay? He ruled that we should have never heard it in the first place, because the notice was defective. So therefore, it had nothing to do with. Also, I wanna ask another question. Am I not correct, I might be incorrect, I make mistakes sometimes. Am I, am I not correct that whether res judicata applies, the board would have to impose that? The board still has the option to hear the case, am I not correct?
That's an argument that has not been mentioned, even if there was res judicata. And I don't believe there is, but even if there was, this board could say, despite that, we wanna hear it again, because we have half the boards knew, it's been years since this was decided first time. And the board could say, I wanna hear it. So, for that reason, for the other reasons that were mentioned, I don't have any problem with your reserving that argument. For us to proceed, we need to make a decision so Mr. Gassion can move forward. Because we need to say either yes, res judicata, or no. That doesn't mean he, that cannot be reserved in the future. In case they wanna appeal, they, they could, they could raise it, but we need to decide it. And, in my opinion, it's not a close call.
So do we have to have a motion and a second and a vote?
I would say-
To say we do not wanna impose it even if it did apply?
We do not feel that res judicata is, is present right now, knowing that Mr. Schwartz can reserve that. If this is heard, if this is approved, if there's an appeal, he can certainly raise it again. But we need to make a decision to move forward.
Okay. So do we have to do that in a, in a way of a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that's the best way to do it. Okay, will I get a motion from the board?
Make a motion, I'll read it.
You want to go to it?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Make a motion, we proceed.
Okay.
I agree.
And, and, motion may be by Ms. Villalot, you get the wording, and seconded by Ms. Lozal, and as soon as, as soon as you go. Yeah, we're gonna move forward.
Proceed.
You got the wording okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Clark Colerole.
Bennett, yes. Caruso?
Yeah.
Lopez?
Yes.
Lozal?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Villalot?
Yes.
Del Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz, your objection's noted, thank your record.
Before we go any further, I would like to have our witness, our, our experts sworn in. So if any issue comes up that we have to ask our experts, we can ask them.
All right.
Yes, several.
We have Mr. Herritz is our board engineer, Mr. DiLorenzo is our, is the city zoning officer, and Ed Colling is the planner that this board's retained for this application. General, if you can raise your right hands, please, with regard to this matter, do you swear that any testimony you may give shall be the truth, set up the guide?
Yes.
Okay, so they're all sworn in. Now we can move on. Mr. Gassion?
Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, as you know, council's name is Robert Gassion, firm is Gassion Michael, 524 Union Avenue, Bellevue. I represent the applicant in this matter, St. Mary and St. Mercurius Coptic Church. My clients are located at 125 Academy Street Lots 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, with street addresses of 121, 125, 143, 145, and 147 Academy Street. The, this is an application seeking preliminary and final site plan and conditional use approval to construct a new parking garage and an additional church facility. The additional facility will be above the parking garage and known as the Coptic Youth Center. They are also seeking to renovate and reconfigure the existing parking area that serves the church. The property is in an RC multifamily zone, where a house of worship is a conditionally permitted use. There are conditions which are not met by this application, therefore, a D3 or conditional use application is appropriate. There is also a D6 aspect to the application because of the height. There are also buck variances which will be reviewed by the planner. The witnesses you'll hear from this evening, should we get that far, are Father Luke Istaphanos of the St. Mark and St. Mercurius Coptic Church, Beth Kenderdine, the site engineer, and Eamon Sedra, the architect. Father Luke will review the mission of the church and discuss what it is the church is seeking approval to build. He will also discuss the general operation of the church and why the facility is needed. Beth Kenderdine will review the location of the property and the existing site. She will discuss the proposed site plan and respond to the comments in Mr. Herritz's review letter. The final witness tonight that I hope to reach, if possible, will be Eamon Sedra, who will describe the existing structure, review what is being demolished, and discuss the proposed new structure. There are other witnesses who I plan to present, but I don't think we'll get to them. Obviously, one of them is Mr. Steck. So, should we get to him, he's ready to testify, but I don't think we will get that one. So I'd like, Councilor, open?
Mr. Gassion, I was gonna ask Mr. Schwartz if you could give us some idea as to what your plans are in terms of witnesses?
In terms of witnesses, I, as I mentioned when I introduced myself, Mr. Fiorenzo, who's lead counsel on this case, had a conflict tonight and was unavailable.
Okay.
I am effectively stepping in at the last minute. I do not, part of who we will call as witnesses will depend on the testimony we get here. We obviously may call an expert planner, particularly after we hear what Mr. Steck says. The issue of parking, we may call an engineer on the issue of parking. But part of that will depend, as we just heard from Mr. Steck, there, they claim substantial changes, and we don't wanna anticipate what it is they're actually going to say until we hear it.
All right. And I'm assuming that when you make, when you and Mr. Fiorenzo make determinations as to witnesses, could they be conveyed to Mr. Gassion ahead of time, so he at least has a clue as to what to expect?
Pass that on to Mr. Fiorenzo.
Okay, thank you.
Not committed to do it.
You can find that, huh?
I gather that.
I just- All right.
Should I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call Father Luke.
Could you, raise your right hand, please. With regard to this matter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name, both your first name and last name, please?
Father Luke L.U.K.E. Istaphanos I.S.T.A.F.A.N.O.U.S.
I.S.T.A.F.A.N.O.U.S.?
Yes.
Thank you.
Father Luke, with what church are you affiliated?
The Coptic Orthodox Church, St. Mary and St. Mercurius Church in Bellevue.
And exactly where is that located?
125 Academy Street, Bellevue, in Bellevue.
And how long have you been there?
I've been there since August of 2010, which is nine years.
And how long has the church been there?
Since February of 2002.
And would you briefly describe your basic mission?
Our basic mission is basically twofold. One is to take care of the Coptic community, which are the Egyptian Christians who are immigrating, basically from Egypt, mostly being from the persecution in Egypt. And to take care of them spiritually, guide them, build them morally, and especially the new generation to, developing here in this country to provide the best education, religious education, spiritual education, to make them functioning moral, good moral functioning youth and adults in the future. That's one fold. The other fold is to integrate that in the community and start providing to the community and serving the local community here in Bellevue, which we've been doing on a regular basis.
And what is it you are seeking approval to do?
We are aspiring to build the Coptic Youth Center to help us perform our duty towards- towards our parishioners and to the community. I'd like to give a brief about St. Mary and St. Mercurius Coptic Church, which is one of 28 Coptic churches, churches in New Jersey. Like I said, it was established in 2002 in Belleville, not only to serve the Coptic community, but to, uh, to, to help serving the Belleville community a great deal. The Coptic Church's strategy in the United States has always been to keep each church's congregation low in number in order to provide more focused pastoral care to the parishioners. Other Coptic churches are constantly being established to serve the influx of the Coptic people from, immigrating from Egypt, like I said, fleeing the persecution. For example, in the past seven years, there were five different Coptic churches in the surrounding areas of Belleville that were, uh, established. Examples like in Morristown, Oakville, Brandon, Summit, and Vasking Ridge. So since the previous, uh, application till now, five different churches were established. However, in St. Mary's and Mercurius Church building is tremendously needed at this point. It was originally a synagogue and is by no means able to provide enough space or facilities to serve our parishioners for the following reasons. They have some reasons why we're applying for this. So number one, we serve about 300 families. Approximately a quarter of them attend the service on Sunday. So approximately 75 families attend the, the mass on Sunday per week. The 75 families have approximately 150 kids who receive communion every Sunday. And then they head to a cafeteria to receive a quick snack before going into Sunday school classes. We provide Sunday school, uh, class to every grade from pre-K to 12th grade. This means we need about 14 rooms to accommodate these kids with approximately, um, 10 to 12 kids per room. We currently have only four. The proposed project is terribly needed to provide those rooms for the Sunday school to serve the children. We also have a very tight cafeteria for the parents to have a small fellowship meal after the mass while waiting for the children. The new project will demolish the existing cafeteria and four rooms to provide extra parking, uh, spots by providing a larger cafeteria to accommodate the parents and the younger kids. Number five, we are, we are in a great need to keep engaging the youth and children in meaningful activities during the week, such as youth meetings, English masses, sports activities. And the Coptic Youth Center will provide all of that. Will provide some meeting rooms, basketball court, bookstore, and a chapel. The little chapel we need to allow for suitable worship area for days, like the weekdays, when we have fewer parishioners, pressures, such as the one we do on Wednesday, for example. So if we have few parishioners, we need a close knit environment to best, uh, provide close proximity to these people together rather than attending in the big church. Number seven, we are currently in a great shortage of offices for administration and management, as well as storage area for normal church operations. All of these needs are accounted for in the proposed center. Eight, we are currently not equipped at all to serve the handicapped individuals. We need ready access for them, wide doors, ramps, elevators, and more importantly, handicapped equipped bathrooms, which we don't have in the current facility. All of these requirements are fulfilled in the proposed center. Nine, we also need to increase the number of the parking spots that we have, which are approximately 30 spots maximum currently. Facilitate the parking process for our parishioners and make it easier, easier for them to park in the center rather than in the streets, and hence we help the community as well. Ten, we believe that our proposed center will not only help the church fulfill its objectives, goals, and missions, but will also help us to solve some of the complaints that occasionally are made by laborers regarding street traffic, noise of kids playing, by adding more safely contained and aesthetically pleasing prisons.
I have no further questions, Father. Any questions by members of the board?
I have a couple. You indicated that one of the goals of the youth center is to also engage the children of your parishioners during the week. What would be the hours of operation for your facility during, during weekdays?
So during weekdays, we normally have Wednesday liturgy. We also have, um, a youth meeting on Thursday night. We have, um, another youth meeting for, with different language. We have both the newly immigrated with, with Arabic on Thursday and the ones who grew up here on, on Friday. So these are the weekdays and Tuesdays.
So Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, nothing on Mondays or Tuesdays?
No.
And approximately how many children do you anticipate would be attending your facility on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays? Can you make any reasonable estimate at this point of how many children would be involved?
Much less than on Sunday. Of course, like I said, on Sundays, the max, we have 153 around. I would guess maybe 25 to 50.
And would these children be coming in by bus, or would they be individually?
Individuals.
Individually, so their parents would be, and the parents would be parking in, in your, your garage facility or your parking lot?
Yes.
Does this, um, does this occur now, currently? What's proposed with the new facilities?
Currently, we are struggling to, uh, to maintain this-
Right, you don't have the, the room, but-
We don't have the room, we don't have-
The activities that would be going on in the new facility are currently going on now? They're just going to be-
Yes, but with much less, um-
Right.
Ability.
Much less ability, maybe better-
And more complaints. So that's why we want to solve that.
You also mentioned that your desperate need of staff offices. Approximately how many staff do you anticipate working? And would, would the staff be working normal business hours Monday through Friday? 8:00 AM to 5:00?
Not really, not, not a full-time staff like that, but mainly the weekends.
Staff would just be on weekends?
Yes.
Nothing during weekdays?
Much less, like maybe one or two.
And how, on weekends, how many staff members would be?
Well, we have the, myself and, and Father Yusef, the two full-time priests, and then we have the board, the board members of the church.
How many?
Around, uh, eight.
Okay. Thank you.
What are your, is someone else going to testify to the hours on work, so I can ask?
Eventually, more.
Okay.
Get more.
Any other questions by members of the board? I have a question. Two questions. Based upon the testimony you gave of 150 children on a Sunday, I would assume then we're talking about a total of about 300 people who add the parents in on a Sunday attending the services, am I correct?
Around, just-
How many services are there, more than one or just one?
No, one.
One service. So you're saying around 300 people, 10 totally?
Correct.
One other question I have, based upon the plans I looked at and the gymnasiums that I also saw on the top floor, is there any intention in the future to open up an actual school there, an academic school?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, okay. Okay, any other questions by members of the board? None? Any members of the public can ask questions based upon testimony only? All right, Mr., Mr. We'll, we'll take the attorney first, first, and then whichever you prefer.
Thank you. Good evening, Father Luke. I just have a few questions regarding your testimony. Now you talked that there are approximately 28 Coptic churches in New Jersey at present?
Yes.
And that is continually expanding?
Yes.
What is the size of the Coptic community in New Jersey?
If you know. If you know.
I don't know how, uh, the group has-
And what, do you know the size of the Coptic community in the Belleville area?
Yes, I just said that we serve 100 families, approximately 300 families.
And to your knowledge, do all of the Coptic families in Belleville go to your church?
Those are the ones that attend our church, but not all of them attend on one, uh, mass.
So, so you have 300?
Approximately, I, I said that, approximately a quarter of them.
So you have approximately 300 congregant families right now? And on any given Sunday, approximately 75 families with approximately 150 kids?
Yes, that's what I said.
How many classrooms are there in the current facility?
Again, uh, four.
And, but you're accommodating 150 kids in the four classrooms presently?
We are trying to use different areas that are not, um, appropriate for a Sunday school class.
How many areas currently would you deem appropriate for a Sunday school class in your existing facility?
Only four, I said.
Just four, so what types of other areas are the students using right now?
Well, we're using the Baptist room, the baptism room, we're using the, the crying room, we're using the upper, uh, like balcony, we're using the church itself sometimes, we're using the deacon's room, we're using the altar sometimes. We are not prepared for, for Sunday school.
You said the kids range in age from pre-K through 12th grade that are coming for school. A pro, how do you divide up the classes, is it by grade level?
Yeah, we, we try to, to divide it by grade level unless you don't have room and we need to combine grades.
Which grades do you combine?
We just, it's not like fixed. Sometimes we combine pre-K and K between the door, and sometimes just the second grade. Not something like, like it's fixed.
For example, do, do all the high school kids meet together?
Sometimes.
Do they sometimes meet separately?
If we need to separate, then we'll find, like I said, we'll put different places and separate.
But typically, on a typical Sunday, the high school kids would all stay together?
Typically, they have a schedule where they sometimes have meetings where they, the speaker addresses all of the, the children, and sometimes they're, they need to separate on gender basis or age basis. Makes a match.
I'm just trying to figure out if, what your needs are in terms of number of rooms because you say you have four existing classrooms.
Counsel, I think he testified the need was 14 rooms.
I, actually, I did not, he did not testify to that. He testified to the number of students and the need for rooms. He did not testify to the number of rooms, so that's what I'm trying to get at here.
I believe that was the new building, 14.
Well, that, and my understanding is you have four existing rooms from your testimony, correct? And the new, the plan for the new building would include 14 rooms?
But I also said we need 14 rooms.
And why is it you test, why is it you believe you need 14?
Because we, we had, I had said that we had approximately 10 to 12 kids per class, and we're hoping to address each level, um, separately to give appropriate care for each level.
Well, how many pre-K kids do you presently have with the church?
Approximately 12.
You have 10 to, so, so it's your testimony, Father, that each grade level has the same number of kids, 10 to 12?
Approximately.
Approximately.
Yeah, I don't know how many we need, but approximately it's, uh, it's a ballpark number.
Does the church currently provide any organized sports activities for the, for the students?
Organized sports?
Sports activities, because as I understood your testimony, Father, it sounds like the primary function of the church for the children is to educate them in the Coptic religion. Is that fair, a fair way to put it?
No, what I said is that we have a twofold mission. The first one is to prepare them, uh, spiritually and morally in the, the community to, to provide good, good youth morally and, and, and like, uh, in holistic approach. That includes to engage them with different ways, not only lectures. Need to engage them also by sports and outings and missionary work. They've been involved in, in a lot of activities in, in Belleville communities.
What sports activities does the church currently provide for the students?
Nothing official, nothing organized.
And that's been throughout the 17 years of the church? And how often do you expect that if the new facility were approved by the board and is ultimately built, that the gymnasium would be used by the students?
We don't have plans of organized sports. We have plans for engaging them in, by sports.
By what sports?
By basketball, soccer, uh, different, just gymnastics.
Would you be organizing classes for that, or is this going to be on an ad hoc basis? I'm trying to understand, then, there's a big gym space shown in the new facility. And in fact, it's one of the driving factors perhaps in the size of the new facility. And from what I understand, Father, currently, there are classes that are taught to the students, but there are no actual, for the last 17 years, sports activities on your premises. Yet you seem to be, the church seems to be thriving and fulfilling its mission with the children.
Nothing organized and, uh, nothing in our facility. But we invite them to, we take them out to parks, for example. We, we try to overcome the, the problem. We do have a problem, that the children, the youth, they need to, to be active. They need to be in major sports, they like sports. That's one of the major things that attracts youth. We would like to give them this gym to, to, to close them in the church and help them to stay within the, the church rather than not.
So as opposed to having them play sports in the Belleville community in general?
No, as, as opposed to be not attached to the church.
You have 150 students who come every Sunday. How many students are there among your entire congregation? If you know. But 25% seems like a pretty good rate of students appearing every Sunday, and that's for the last 17 years without a gym facility. Without the gym facility, you would still be able to teach the classes, correct? If you had the classrooms, you'd be able to teach-
Yeah, the lectures.
Right, and you'd still be able to organize youth activities absent the gym?
Lectures, yeah.
Well, and, and other activities, you'd have a cafeteria, you could, how, how, do you currently use the cafeteria as a space to, for organized activities for the childrens?
No, because it's used during the Sunday school activities, it's time, like I said.
Well, but you also testified that there are certain weeknights that the kids come for activity.
Sometimes use cafeteria weeknights.
Okay, and so that, that's one means to-
But not with sports, just for classes and discussions.
But that still brings the kids together and into the church, right?
Yeah, but not with sports.
Not with sports, so the only thing, the only thing missing would be sports if there's no gym?
Not only thing missing, I, that's one of the things we, I mentioned ten points that we need in Belleville, one of them was the, with the gym.
I understand that, I'm, I'm just focusing right now on the gym. If you got everything else on the wish list of the plans, the 14 classrooms, the office space, everything else, but not a gym, you would still be able to fulfill your mission with the children as you described it, except for that one activity, sports?
No, yeah, because I said it's needed to, to, to fulfill that, um, mission, to engage the youth. We have to have some sort of a sports class.
You also said there's a current shortage of offices. You said that there are two fathers in full-time employment at the church, correct? Are there any other full-time employees?
We don't have full-time employees, but we do have, uh, the, the- We don't have full-time employees, but we do have, the way the Catholic Church is run are mostly by volunteers, and we do have volunteers all the time, like they're there to serve. So we need administrative offices for them, for the registrar, for the board.
Let me try and rephrase my statement, then, my question.
Why did I not answer it?
No, 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 you did, I may have asked a poor question. So rather than refer to them as employees, do you have any full-time staff working at the church? Staff that are, say, more than 20 hours per week?
Well, we have maybe the janitor of the, I don't think we have.
Does the janitor require an office?
No.
So now you have volunteers who work at the church. Approximately how many hours a week does a single volunteer work at the church?
Actually, no, they can come any time.
So is there, would it be possible for the volunteer staff to share office space?
That's what's happening now, it's not, it's not, it's not the best way to run a good institution.
What types of activities do the volunteers help the church?
Well, all the Sunday schools are run by volunteers, all the meetings are run by volunteers, all, everything are in ministry, basically.
And when a volunteer is teaching a Sunday school class, they would be in the classroom, right?
Right.
So they wouldn't need to be in an office at that time?
Not at that time, private staffs will only be like one hour.
And do these volunteers spend time at the church preparing for classes, do they do that in their home?
There are certain people who would need offices to prepare towards services.
How many? If you know. Actually, I would like to best guess, I would like to best guess, because I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how many people are present on a non-religious service on a daily basis, because there's, there's multiple offices in the new space, there's offices in the old space. I'm just trying to figure out whether we have the right number, too many or even too few. And that, so, and you're there every day, is that fair?
Yeah.
So you see the volunteers on a daily basis, right? So approximately how many volunteers are there on a daily basis?
Maybe, like I said, Monday and Tuesday are the low days, but the other days, we have, we have, we have the deacons, we have the board members, we have Sunday school teachers. Is that all because of the offices? I don't know how many offices we're proposing, so I don't have that company.
It's only, it's only three.
Four.
It's all for the offices, we were asking for three offices.
Well, but it's all part of?
With two priests and the board, basically.
How many deacons work at the church?
We have a huge number of deacons, but again, we don't call it work, a service.
I'm sorry, that's core wording on my part. How many deacons participate in the church?
On Sunday, they're too many.
Well, Sunday, they're working on services, I presume. Let's say on a Wednesday, because on Wednesday you have liturgy classes, if I heard correctly. Is that right?
Yeah.
So for a liturgy class, how many?
Not liturgy class, we have liturgy on there.
What is, I'm sorry, can you explain what that is, then?
Mass, mass.
Yeah, oh, you have a mass, so that's in the main chapter?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you have youth activity on Thursday nights?
Yes.
And then there was a, and I missed, maybe I misunderstood, there was some sort of language class on Fridays?
No, no, what I said is that we have two youth masses, two youth meetings, one for the newly admitted who speak only Arabic or mainly Arabic, so we have it in Arabic, that's on Thursday, and we have another on Friday that is mainly English.
Okay, so on the Thursday with the youth, approximately how many come to the Thursday activities presently?
Twenty-five to 50, I think.
Okay, and what about, and it's, on the Friday activities, approximately how many students are present?
Maybe towards the 15, more.
Are there any activities on Saturdays at the church?
Occasionally, but not a, not a big one.
So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday are the big days?
Yeah.
Okay, what hours is there activity at the church on Wednesdays? When is the mass?
10 to 12.
And other than from 10 to 12, is the church in use on Wednesdays?
Not really.
Okay, and with the youth activities on Thursday, what hours are those?
Eight to 11.
At night, 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM? Is there activity during the day at the church on Thursdays?
No.
Okay, and with Fridays, what is the hours for the activities on Friday?
Seven to 11.
PM to 11, 7:00 PM to 11? And Sunday with mass and with the teaching for the students, what hour, what are the hours that the church is in operation?
From 8:30 in the morning till, the mass is 8:30 to 12.
And what about the Sunday school?
Sunday school is around maybe one more hour.
Still about 1:00 PM?
Around one, and then there's some meetings.
So mid-afternoon?
Mid-afternoon.
Have you discussed the proposed plans with any of your neighbors in the surrounding area of the church?
No.
Have you, have they reached out to you at all?
They didn't, nobody reached out to me.
Have you or any of the members of the church reached out to the public?
Objection, I don't see what the basis will be, but he answered the question. He hasn't reached out to anybody, nobody's reached out to him.
Is that your answer? Nope, you haven't reached out to anybody and nobody's reached out to you?
Personally, no.
Do you know if any members of the public have reached out to any, to your, to the other father in the church?
I don't know.
So you're not aware of that, okay. What about the deacons? Do you know whether the deacons have been contacted by any members of the church, of the public?
Again, what's the relevance of the continued line of questioning? If he answered the question, you're continuing to pursue the same line of questions as to who reached out.
I have.
It's not relevant to the application.
I disagree, because it goes to his, the participation in the community that he says was a big reason for the things they want to do, is to participate in the community.
Whether they reached out to him with regard to this application is not indicative of the involvement in the community.
Why doesn't?
Except for in the part.
Father, just, if you could answer the question, I think you've hit the answer. If you can answer the question, if you know of any, of your personal knowledge, if anyone else has been contacted, just say it. If not, then we can move ahead. If you don't know, you don't know. I think the question was, has anyone, to your best, to the best of your knowledge, has anyone in the neighborhood reached out to you, deacons?
Yes, that was where I was at.
In terms of what you're proposing, that's it.
I know of one time occasion when a neighbor, a specific neighbor who was not happy with the church for some reason, and we tried to alleviate that and reach out and make peace. So I know of at least one incident when there was an attempt to reach out to that neighbor to try to make peace and alleviate the situation, which we would love, but it was, was received very ill.
Just a couple more questions, Father. Currently, 300 families.
Yeah.
Over the last five years, has the church been growing, shrinking, remaining about the same?
There is, there are, it's a usual process in the Coptic churches that there are people come and people leave. So we've been more or less the same in terms of number, more or less approximately we'll have.
So?
But like I said earlier, the Coptic church tends to give birth to different Coptic churches, which, that's exactly what happened during the last seven years. Like five different churches were started away from Belleville, around Belleville, which I mentioned.
You've mentioned in the last seven years?
They could have been part of our congregation and they separated to make like smaller churches.
Going back seven, approximately seven years, how many families were members of the congregation?
We've been more or less in the, in the figure of 300 families for many years.
Thank you very much, Father, those are all the questions I have.
Yes, okay. Yes. Name and address, please, and try and move up, because we're on camera, so that way they'll know who's talking.
Where?
Right up here. Right here, always you're on the camera.
Next to him?
No, move up, in front of him, in front.
All right, first I'd like to kindly request the board of Mary Higgins, 148 Wrighton Avenue, Belleville. I'd like to request respectfully the board that these witnesses be given a microphone, because I cannot hear a bono look at all. And this gentleman over here seemed to be asking him questions which he thought were redundant, but they weren't. I could not hear him.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're only up to ask him questions based on testimony.
No, I'm addressing the board that, you know, this is supposed to be the big technology room, that you provide him and me a microphone, because I cannot hear him. So some of my questions may be redundant. Now I'll proceed with the questions based on his testimony that I could hear, thank you.
You're welcome.
A bono look.
Yes.
Pathologics.
Very good.
Thank you. You said that you wanted to engage the community, is one of your main goals?
Yes.
Yes, that's true. It seems that your definition of community is a little bit different from ours. Does that include the broader community of Belleville, or just the Blessed Coptic Church community?
What I said is that we, our mission is twofold. One is to develop the Coptic community or fleeing from persecution from Egypt, the Christians coming from Egypt, to build them up and give them good raising, to be part of the community and be productive and positively engaged in the community, that's one.
Excuse me, what community are you referring to?
Belleville and in general.
Thank you, that's what I was confused about. So you want to have them integrated and become productive citizens, respectful of the community?
Correct, that's one thing. The other day is to provide services, which has been happening. We've been involved with, with the police department, and we've been involved with soup kitchens and activities around the community a lot. We have a class, specific class for high schoolers that go out and serve every single week in the community.
In Belleville?
Both in Belleville and surrounding town.
Is that what you call missionary work?
No.
Because you mentioned missionary work.
Well, what I mean is to provide service, community service.
Could you name one in Belleville, because I'm not aware of this?
Well, I just named the helping with the police departments.
You helped with the police department?
Several times.
Fundraising?
Not fundraisers.
Could you give me one specific?
Like the police day, the, I don't know the exact term, but there is a day that the police have some, some sort of a?
Reach out.
Money, for donations?
No, not for donations.
Well, for what? Well, what do you physically do then?
The police department visited our church and we participate, and we, our children go and serve with them at least once a year, and also provide?
Excuse me, your children, no, no, listen.
Would you not interrupt, please?
No, no.
I can answer the question.
No, I don't understand what he's saying.
Ms. Higgins?
I don't understand what he's saying.
They have a chance to answer.
The children go and serve with the police once a year, you're doing what?
Ms. Higgins?
Okay, let him answer, go ahead.
Ms. Higgins?
What?
I want the record to reflect that this witness has come up here breathing fire in broomstone. Can you just relax, ask him questions?
I am not, no, you know what, I requested a microphone, because I can't hear him, and I can't hear you.
You're yelling, there's no reason to yell.
I'm yelling because I want people to hear me, because there's no microphone.
Believe me, they can hear you, okay?
Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, can you show some respect to the board and to the audience?
I am showing respect.
No, you're not.
No problem.
No.
Because I'm questioning him?
No.
What she does?
Excuse me, can I, can I, no, this is my time to question him, and you're interfering.
I'm not interfering, I'm trying.
I wanted to go on record that he's interfering with my, my freedom under the Constitution of the United States to question him.
Ms. Higgins, all he's asking you to do is take, is calm down a little bit.
Okay, I will, I will.
Mary, Mary, can I just have?
Okay, okay.
Ms. Higgins?
I respectfully, I respectfully ask you a bono look.
Yes, ma'am.
Specifically, what do the, would you mind not breathing in my face? Back off, you're threatening, he's threatening me, tell him to back off.
Listen, Mary, listen, you gotta calm down.
Look at him, look at him.
He's, he's at least three, four feet away from you, so relax.
All right, okay, now, you said that the Coptic Christian children go out with the police once a year and help them, specifically what do they do?
I don't exactly know, but they, I haven't been with them physically, but there is, I can, I can provide maybe next time a detailed activities of these days, but I have it on record every single year, and even more, there is integration between this township or the police department here and the church youth.
Thank you, I really appreciate your answer. Do you know if the Belleville police would have a record of these activities?
I'm sure they do, I'm, I'm.
Okay, would you mind if I checked with them?
I don't mind.
Because you forgot, so I can go check with them, is that permissible?
That's permissible.
Okay, since you said that the Catholic churches, sorry, the Coptic churches are expanding in this area, wouldn't the services that you provide be redundant? Because I know there's a very large youth center in Jersey City, I think they're putting water with and cedar grove, so wouldn't one here be redundant?
I don't think so, because we're providing service for different people.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Would any of these services you're providing to the Coptic youth, such as sports and I guess ESL classes? Arabic, Arabic language?
No, I didn't say, I didn't even say classes.
Okay, well, you said classes, correct?
The Sunday school classes.
Sunday school classes, that's right. Sports activities, for example, would that be open to non-Coptic Christians, residents of Belleville and their children?
I'm sure we can study this on a video basis, we never rejected anyone. We can study situations like that.
Okay, right now, do you have any residents of Belleville youth attending your church who are not Coptic?
Occasionally, yes.
It's very nice, because I went to your church too, and I'm not Coptic, I like your church very much.
Thank you.
All right.
You're more than welcome anytime.
Thank you, except they always have a problem with parking there.
That's why we try to move them.
All right. Anyway, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because all the classrooms, sports facilities would be tax exempt, because that's the status of the church, tax exempt, so the Belleville taxpayers would be picking up the cost for municipal services. You wouldn't be paying taxes on the?
Objection, that's not relevant.
It's not relevant?
No, it isn't. Taxes are not involved in this.
Well, I'm just concerned because of the number of police that went there, what, four, 500 times, who paid for that?
Ma'am, ma'am, that's not testimony, that's true.
Thank you. All right, one more question, you mentioned that there were many deacons who went there on Sunday, deacons?
Yeah.
Are they volunteers?
Yes, no.
They're not paid? They don't receive a salary?
No.
Deacons don't receive a salary?
He's answered the question.
No, I'm just curious.
He's answered the question.
No, you just?
They're not employees, they're volunteers, he said that.
Well, I didn't hear him, I just wanted him to clarify, all right? I may be repeating what this gentleman over here said, but since you own so much property in the neighborhood, you said before that nobody approached you, or you didn't approach anybody in the neighborhood? you said before that nobody approached you or you didn't approach anybody in the neighborhood, correct?
I said that personally, yes.
Personally?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next. I want, I'll just finish that, that's it, can you?
It should be okay.
Because the machine's running out.
It should be okay.
Oh, just one, just one. Give it to this witness, that's it, before we finish. Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Alex Gasparo, 144 Academy Street. You mentioned this is a church. Can you tell me what the beliefs are?
Objection.
Yeah, I don't.
That's academic.
It's not relevant.
Not relevant.
Well, they claim to be Copic Christians.
Well, well, all I'm saying is everybody has a right to practice their religion, no matter what religion it is.
No, I understand.
And that's guaranteed by the US Supreme Court.
May I ask that, under his Copic Christian status, within being that he's claiming to be part of the Belleville community, St. Peter's is right up the street. Why don't you, which they have all the facilities that you need, why not allow or have your, you're invited there as well? Why, why do you need a building when there's one already there for you that can accommodate all of this? All of that you plan to do?
It's different, it's different.
It's a separate religion, sir.
It's a Copic Christians, they are Catholic.
The Catholic Christian and Roman Catholic are two different things. Trust me.
But they claim to be, what he's preaching.
Each, each church, listen to me, sir, each church.
Couldn't it be better if he would say with him?
Each, each, each church, each type of Jewish, whatever it is, all has a right to practice independently.
Right, I understand.
There is, there is no requirement that, that they get together with other religions.
I'm not asking him to do that, I'm asking him why he doesn't. It's, it's a Christian church, there's an existing Christian church.
Sir, it's not a Copic church.
But I'm trying to determine what is the difference.
Sir, sir, you have two Roman Catholic churches in Belleville. You have St. Anthony's and you have St. Peter's. And they don't work together, okay? I'm trying to make it simple so you can understand this.
Because they don't, he's saying he's willing to reach out to the community. If he's willing to do that, why can't?
The community is one thing, other religions is another.
But they're, they're claiming to do the same thing, to be part of the community. Why can't he integrate or ask for the community?
Because each one looks to give followers from the community. But it's two separate forms of religion.
But they're inviting all to do the same thing.
Let me, do you have a letter saying they're inviting his church?
They're inviting everyone from the community.
Everyone from the community, which is the same thing he does.
But why can't he attend the invitation that?
But that's up to him if he wants to.
Well, you won't let me find out why. Is that, is that true or not?
But it's academic. They have a right to practice their own religion separately.
And I'm not denying it. I'm asking him why he's, he doesn't accept the invitation that's been handed here. You're telling me about all this other things, it doesn't pertain, you could ask, his own attorney will tell you. It's a question. If he's been invited, why doesn't he at least go and find, they have all the facilities that he, that he needs.
Mr. Higgins, do you want to make a comment on this?
I do not, I object to the question.
He objected to the question. The objection is sustained.
He has a choice. He follows his own religion.
And that's why. I'm asking him why he doesn't accept the invitation.
Sir, the objection has been sustained so you cannot ask the question. Is that enough?
If you're insisting.
I'm insisting.
I'm telling you, it is on record.
Okay.
You say there's three hundred families. Approximately how many people per family?
Approximately three to four.
Three or four. So on the outset, four.
Okay.
So twelve hundred people. Do you have in your new plan the ability to accommodate twelve hundred people at one time?
Objection. The father testified that the average number of families that attends on Sunday is seventy-five. The full three hundred never attend as would he in the beginning. So they don't have to have accommodations for twelve hundred people?
He did say that.
He did say that. Is there ever a time that twelve hundred people will not show up? Can you guarantee that twelve hundred, three hundred families will not show up?
Well, let me ask him a question. Maybe that'll answer your question. Father.
Yes, sir.
At the most holy times of the year, Easter, Christmas, what's the maximum amount of people you, you can estimate come to your church?
Actually, we have night masses on Christmas and Easter.
Yeah.
And that tend to lower the amount of attendees.
In other words, you have two services, one during the day and one during the night?
No, no, it's only one night service.
Now, what is the maximum amount that you could estimate ever, ever attended that? Those are the two most holiest days there is.
If I guess, it's like around maybe a little bit more than the usual Sunday, maybe eighty, ninety families.
Eighty or ninety families?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's the nighttime and it doesn't.
So we'll say the most, the most, we'll go over the limb. The most is a hundred out of the three hundred.
That we see maybe on Palm Sunday because it's a morning mass.
Okay.
So that's the most we can get.
All right, does that satisfy your answer?
So a hundred families times.
Is the most that ever showed up.
Okay, on the outset, four, that's four hundred people. Is this new building going to accommodate four hundred people at one given time? Do you have parking and so forth, four hundred people?
That's once a year.
Once a year.
It's once a year.
But do they have from once a year?
Well, wait, wait, let me answer the question. Since he's, since he said the average family is from three to four people and the most there ever is, is three hundred, is a hundred families coming. So you're talking about three hundred people, but you're talking about only a hundred parking spaces are needed and he's got over a hundred parking spaces. So that answers your question.
For four hundred people?
You're not listening.
Yeah, but I'm.
Three to four people in a car. One hundred families, we're going over the limb, one hundred families on Palm Sunday and you got over a hundred parking spaces.
I understand.
So it's sufficient parking.
Can the building accommodate four hundred people?
The building is, is not for that reason. What happens is that the church, the house of worship is there presently and they already handle these people at the house of worship. The new building is not a house of worship.
So this existing building can accommodate four hundred people. It's designed for that.
Apparently.
Do you know that?
That's a question, that's not for us, it's for the, for the applicant.
Can your building?
Or his engineer, or his architect, whoever.
Allow him, four hundred people, are you allowed?
Father is not a witness with regard to capacity of the church. He is not an expert in engineering or architecture.
The answer is apparently yes because they're doing it already, which has nothing to do with the new building that's under proposal.
Okay, but if they're doing it already, are they allowed to do it?
Of course they're allowed to do it.
How do you know that?
Sir, don't ask these ridiculous questions, please.
Don't leave ridiculous answers.
Well, no, because all I'm telling you is they're currently doing it.
But are they allowed to do it?
Well, then I suggest you talk to the building department or you talk to the police department or the fire department. But that is, that is not something that we get asked here.
And I will, I will contact the fire department.
All right, thank you.
Point of order, point of order.
No, wait, let him finish his question.
Now, point of order, you cannot recall anybody's questions ridiculous. You're intimidating them from speaking.
Yeah, you're intimidating me. I'm glad you haven't turned around.
Mr. Gassion, will there be a witness at some future point in time to address the questions asked?
Yes.
And one other question. Can you provide enough parking for the current building and the new building so that this board will be able to pass this application?
Objection to the question of this witness. He didn't testify to parking, he's not an expert on parking and there is no parking variance being sought.
He's going to have a parking expert.
Okay, objection, thank you.
Next, yes, ma'am, come up, name and address, please.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, my name is Uctilia Gasparo and I live at 144 Academy Street. And my, my concern is regarding the, the youth group or the hours of operation in terms of, um, what are they going to be? Do you have a set amount of time? Because we, it is a residential neighborhood and people do work, people are paying their taxes.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, in terms of noise level, in terms of activity, what are the hours specifically in terms of, is this going to be a Monday through Sunday activities? I want to know specifically in terms of hours.
Because this is a very important issue. The hours will stay the same, except that we are trying to resolve the issues that you are, you just said, the noise, the, uh, the parking issues. We're trying, that's exactly why. We believe that this building is going to contain these activities rather than make a problem, cause a problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Schwartz, I, I should have asked you earlier. I'm assuming that no one who has asked questions is your client?
It's not that I'm aware of.
Do you know?
I represent the association.
Okay.
So if they're going to testify, if someone is a member of the association, they're still free to ask questions individually.
I'm sorry?
I represent a legal entity, the association.
All right.
Not the individuals.
All right, but your, your client, as you know, your, your client, specific client cannot, has to ask through you.
Correct.
Okay.
Understood.
Yes, Randy, come on up. Name and address, please. Is there anybody else who wishes to ask questions of the witness? Okay, because we're running out of tape, that's why I'm asking questions. Go ahead, Mr. Fran.
Fran Antonio, 129 Mount Prospect Hill. Please don't intimidate me, I get nervous when I speak.
You know, you're very nervous.
Father Luke, you take, you take kids out to parks or what parks do you take them to?
Occasionally, we're trying, like I said before, we're trying to engage them in some, some outings, some activities, some sports activities to get them engaged. We occasionally take them to Goddard Park or maybe other, some cities.
How do you get them there?
That's not, not like a regular thing, that's occasionally when we go.
How do you get them there?
We rent buses or sometimes we take private, we, we gather over there by the public fence.
All right, other parks, do you take the youths or your congregation to any other outings?
Occasionally, we do visit some areas, including some other churches, Catholic churches, sometimes we go visit. Occasionally, you do trips to other churches.
And how do you get them to those trips?
The same way.
Buses?
Buses or individual cars.
All right, it said there's three hundred, about three hundred families in your congregation?
Approximately.
Do you know how many of them live in Belleville?
Uh, I don't have them. But those are the ones that we serve with. Like, again, they don't come all at once, but, but they, we serve them on a regular basis.
All right, your plan to advertise that this is a, a youth facility, pretty large building you're going to put up and more parking and all that, do you plan or hope to increase your congregation?
We don't hope for increasing the congregation because when we increase the congregation, we have less spiritual and pastoral care to them. So like I said before, the strategy has been always giving birth to new churches rather than increasing the, the congregation.
Right, because if, judging by the plans, I'm a contractor, looks, you're going to expend quite a bit of money so you're going to need some revenue to pay for these buildings, correct?
That doesn't have to do with increasing the congregation to, to give more money, that's not our strategy.
Okay, thank you, Father Luke.
Thank you.
There's no other person asking questions of this witness?
Can I ask one quick follow-up question before you?
Go ahead.
Father Luke, you said earlier that your congregation, the youth have participated with the Belleville Police Department. Were you referring to the annual community outreach programs that the Belleville Police Department's been running the last few years? Is that what, what?
Yeah, I think that's what it's called.
That's what, that's what I wanted to clarify. It's the, the Belleville Police Department, at least for the last three years and maybe the last five or six years, has been running regular community outreach programs. And I believe, I've, I've attended a few of them and I think I saw, saw you there. So I wanted just to get this on record, to clarify what, what Ms. Higgins was arguing a few moments ago. This is the annual, it's at least once a year, maybe they do it twice a year now. But the Belleville Police Department has been running community outreach programs and your, your congregation has been participating in the same. That's what that was, that matter was about. Thank you, thank you.
His, his church also participated, I remember, in the national smokeout they had at his church. I remember that. Okay, so we're going to take a ten-minute recess and then we'll come back and there'll only be one more witness that we'll hear from. That's all I have on the.
I understand.
Okay. Ten-minute recess. Come back twenty after. Regular meeting of the Belleville Zoning Board of Adjustment for June 6, 2019 will now come back into session. And Mr. Gassion, I assume you're calling another witness?
I am, Mr. Kendrick.
This will be the last witness for the union.
I understand that.
Okay.
Ms. Kendrdine.
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give Shelby the truth?
Yes.
Did you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Beth, B-E-T-H, Kendrdine, K-E-N-D-E-R-D-I-N-E.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendrdine, what is your business address?
Edwards Engineering Group, 69 West End Avenue in Somerville, New Jersey.
And what is your occupation?
I am a civil site engineer.
How long practicing in the field of engineering?
Twenty years with my current company, fourteen years licensed.
Are you a licensed engineer at the state?
I am.
Just give us an example of some of the work you've done.
Um, I've done a, a lot of site plan projects across the state of New Jersey, a lot for public school districts, some private companies as well, some private developments.
And have you testified freely towards zoning boards and planning boards?
Yes, I have.
We accept that as an expert in each and every occasion?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I submit that Beth Kendrdine is qualified in the field of engineers.
Yes, I think she is. As long as her license is, Carmen, I have no problem.
All right.
You're welcome.
Prepare a site plan for this project?
I did.
Would you review the location of the property?
I'm referring to my, the plan set that was prepared by my company. It's the proposed Catholic Youth Center Site Plan Application, designated last revised February 4, 2019. It's the same that was submitted to all of the.
And the board members have?
Yes.
Okay. She may want to bring it up.
Can you, oh, I wasn't sure where to put it.
So the public and the board can see?
Well, I think from that angle, they can see pretty good. Don't worry about us, we've got the planes in front of us.
We've got the public, so I don't deal with this. Okay.
Anything further with regard to the location of the property?
Okay, no. It's at 125 Academy Street. It, it is close to the public library, right next door. It's up the street from Washington Avenue and it backs onto Rutgers Court.
Describe the existing site.
Okay, I am, turn the page, I am now on sheet. C one dash, this one point zero, C dash one point zero, excuse me. So the existing site is actually, I think it's five, five lots. So we have the existing church building in the center of the lot and it has an extension that heads to the eastern part of the lot. Then there are three existing residential buildings that are also included in the project.
Anything further with regard to the description of the existing site, parking there, anything like that?
The, there is existing parking, there's about approximately thirty parking stalls in an area off Rutgers Court. So there access going north off Rutgers Court, turn right onto the property and you can access a gravel parking lot in the rear of the church facility.
And would you review the topography of the property?
So you can see the contour lines on this existing topography map, the survey. We have a huge elevation change going from west to east on the property. It is approximately twenty-seven feet of elevation change going from this corner down Academy Street to this corner.
Would you review the existing landscaping?
The existing landscaping is pretty minimal. There's some shrubs along the front of the building. There are some street trees and edges. There's some larger trees and evergreens that are along the eastern property line that abut the library. For the most. For the most part, the rest of the site is gravel or lawn. There's not a whole lot of landscaping to be spoken of along the residential properties.
Would you review the proposed site?
So I am now on, I'm just gonna briefly show this sheet C-2.0. It essentially shows everything that's gonna get demolished before we construct the new development. So we are demolishing a portion of the existing church building and the annex that's located on top of it. We're gonna demolish the existing gravel parking area, we're gonna demolish the three residential dwellings along with all of the improvements associated with them. So the driveways, the concrete stairs and all of that.
So all the demolishing will take place first before any construction, is that correct?
It is my understanding that they want to demolish these residential facilities first and construct the new Catholic Youth Center before they demolish this side of the site, so that they have use of the full facility before the new one comes online.
Well, the reason I'm asking this question is, was to prevent them, from once they demolish those buildings and they build a new building, and just say they don't wanna demolish the other one later on.
I don't think they're gonna phase it as far as the performance guarantee.
They won't get a certificate of occupancy to occupy if they don't complete what they have to complete.
Right.
So if they don't knock down the old building and fix the old parking lot, then they can't get a certificate of occupancy?
They're only gonna get a conditional C of O until they finish everything. That's just the way normal practice works.
Alright, this is one full application, we're not proposing phasing. I'm just explaining what their plan for his direction is.
Okay. Now, you have all the plans there, correct?
Correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
And a question came up, actually, it was Mr. Stack. Stack brought up the question. I'm gonna tell you why. When he gave us this paper here.
And we thought it was things.
This here, are you familiar with this?
Yes.
On the west side of the building, would be to the left, that's to the left of the building, the proposed buildings.
Yes.
Okay? He has here that prior, there's a five-foot side yard. Currently, they're proposing an 18-foot side yard. Is that accurate?
Side yard, no, front yard.
No. Side yard. Front yard, they're proposing an 18.1. Prior, it was 9.5.
Correct.
Okay? Side yard, on the west side.
Right, yeah, I understand.
They're proposing 18 feet?
Right.
Because the report we got from our planner says that they're only proposing 10 feet. And that's why I have the question.
Right. So the, hold on, I'm gonna switch to sheet C-3.
No problem.
So this is the same plan that you all received, I just colored it up a little bit to make it pretty?
Yeah, you have to mark that.
Okay.
We had A4?
A, A. Keep track of that. A3.
So there is the exist, or the proposed building, this is the, give me a second. So the existing building is here.
Right.
That's gonna remain, correct? This square is the proposed building, okay? And there is actually a row of parking that's outside the building footprint. So this distance from this property line to that building wall is 18 feet, okay?
So what are they going, right to the property line?
To eight, no, no. The parking stalls are approximately five feet off the property line.
Oh, so that's why they're saying it's five feet.
Correct. So this is the, the side yard is actually 18 feet to the building.
Is there any reason why it can't be put the way it's supposed to be, 15 feet?
Instead of 18 feet?
Yeah, isn't there enough space in the garage?
I think that's just the way the spacing worked out. You're talking about making the, this wider?
No, making the side yard wider.
No, the side yard here is 18 feet.
18 now.
Oh, it is 18?
Yes. It's 18 to the building.
But she said five, I didn't say five.
Sorry, to the parking is 5 feet.
There's five feet from the building to the parking.
Yes, from the building line to the parking.
When you include in the parking stall, there's 18.
Line to building is 18.
Okay. So technically, the boundary between the next property and that is 18 feet.
It's 18 feet to the building wall, yes.
Okay.
Okay, now, the 10 feet, I think, that you're talking about is this property line at the back. So if you consider this to be a rear parking lot?
No, it says here, the rear of the yard is 10 feet and 10 feet's required, so it's allowed.
Right.
I'm only talking about the side yard.
Okay, side yard is 18.
It says the requirement's 15 feet, proposed is 10. That's all I'm saying.
Right. I think that there's a discrepancy whether this rear line is a side yard or a rear line. That's where that variance number comes into effect. So I'm calling it.
Mr. Colling, do you wanna respond to that?
I, yeah, when I recorded Edward Colling, Board Planner, I basically took the 10-foot number from your zoning chart.
Okay.
And the zoning chart said 10 feet for the side yard, it was existing at...
10.3, it's a...
That's the backyard.
This is the rear yard, 10 feet.
Yeah, we're talking about the side yard.
Okay, so then there is no variance.
There is no variance then?
Well, if, this may have been from a previous rendition of the zoning chart, when maybe the plan was modified, but the zoning chart wasn't updated. So I would really rely on the witness to verify that.
Okay, as long as it's clarified, that's all.
Exactly.
Based on what's being discussed here with regard to the side yard, rear yard, just review the bulk requirements and discuss the variances, both pre-existing and new.
Sure. So the bulk zoning table is actually on the cover sheet of your plan set. We have minimum lot size, we are well above the required. Required is 20,000 square feet, we're proposing 54,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is 100 feet, we get 333.6. The minimum front yard is 20 feet. The existing minimum front yard is 16.5. We are proposing 18. And that is to the existing building wall. So our proposed building is lining up with the existing building front edge. The minimum side yard, we just discussed, is actually 18 feet, which is along this side here. The minimum rear yard, 10 feet, we are meeting in the back of the site. The building height is proposed at 52 feet, which is above the 35-foot requirement. The maximum stories, we are at three stories, so there's no variance required there. The lot coverage required is 35 percent, we are proposing 43 percent. The maximum impervious coverage is required at 40 percent, we are proposing 80 percent, which is a pre-existing condition, although it is increasing from 64 percent. The minimum open space, obviously, is requirement at 35 percent and we are proposing 20 percent, which again is a pre-existing condition, but we are increasing that, or decreasing that from 35 percent to 20 percent. So the required variances are for the front yard, the, excuse me, the building height, the lot coverage, impervious coverage and the open space.
Would you please review the ingress, egress and parkings?
So the, on the west side of the site, we are proposing a parking garage with two levels of parking. What I'm showing on this plan is actually the lower level of parking. So there's gonna be two two-way driveways off of Academy Street and two-way circulation through the parking garage level.
So each level will not be connected to the other in any way, there's no ramps?
There's no ramps.
Okay.
No. So the lower level would be accessed from this driveway, the central driveway, and then the same way out, the upper level will be accessed from the other driveway.
How many parking spaces in the lower level?
The lower level has, hold on one second. I'm sorry, I have both numbers, two levels, which is 76 total. The lower level will have 38 stalls, the upper level will have 38 stalls, each one will have two handicap stalls. Then the eastern parking lot, we're essentially using the same driveway that they use now to access the parking lot behind the church, but we're reconfiguring it, paving it, making the circulation a little bit better, and we are proposing 33 parking stalls with two handicap parking stalls. So the access from Rutgers Court will continue to be essentially what's a one-way driveway. So the idea being that it's gonna function the same way it does now, in that visitors come to the church essentially on the same schedule. So it's not a transient use. People aren't coming and going all at the same time. They can use it so that everybody comes at the same time and everybody leaves at the same time, all in one, en masse, essentially. So it's gonna work essentially, like I said, the same way that it does now, and at times when they don't want it to be used, they have gates, they can lock it off. So people can't just come and go as they please into this parking lot.
Would you just again review the ingress and egress?
The ingress and egress is off Academy Street for the parking lot and off Rutgers Court for the rear parking lot on the east side of the site.
And do the number of parking spaces comply?
Yes, we do.
Review the existing and proposed drainage.
See, I did submit a storied site drainage report as part of our application. For the most part, the site drains toward Academy Street. There is a small area of the rear parking lot which currently drains toward Rutgers Court. So the proposed system, everything will be collected and drained toward Academy Street. And what we've done is design, I've designed an infiltration system within the new parking lot that's on the east side of the site, and that will collect and store and infiltrate the entire two-year storm event. So the idea is that we will mitigate any possible impact to the existing storm sewer system in Academy Street. I should also point out that as part of this proposal, we are putting in a new public storm sewer system in Academy Street all the way down to Washington Avenue. So as part of this, we are improving the existing public storm sewer system in order to make sure that we're not flooding Academy Street all the way down to Washington.
Would you review the proposed lighting?
Sure. So I've also colored up the lighting and landscaping plan. You want to...
Mr. Rego, you want this to be A4 because you colored it up?
Yes, absolutely, A4. And this is, is it lighting scheme?
Yes, it's lighting and landscaping, it's sheet C-7.0.
Okay.
So the proposed lighting within the parking garage will obviously be building mounted and ceiling mounted to provide adequate light within the parking garage. The surface parking area will be led by freestanding LED luminaires. The lighting, I've added put candle lights to show the lighting distribution and we're essentially trying to keep it contained within the parking lot, so we don't have any lights spillage across the property lines.
Review the proposed landscaping plan.
The landscaping, for the most part, what we have are some small ornamental trees along the front edge and within the new parking area on the east side of the site. And then we have some azalea shrubs, excuse me, azalea shrubs, pink and white azaleas. And then we have ground covered, proposed, sardine junipers and taxandra within this parking area. The idea being that we're trying to keep it maintenance, three or low maintenance landscaping and also provide some decoration for the site. There wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to provide islands in the parking lot because we need to make sure we get traffic circulation through it. But we've done what we can with what we've got.
Are there any azaleas or dogwoods in there?
Yes, flowering dogwoods, they're small ornamental trees, flowering dogwoods along the front edge, pink and white azaleas.
So there'll be some color?
Yes.
And how will the refuse and recycling be handled?
There is an existing refuse and recycling area in the back of the site here, and we're gonna maintain that, but make it a little bit more structured. So refuse, recycling, all of that will get picked up from Rutgers Court in the same way it was now.
And that'll be a private strategy?
Correct.
And how will deliveries be handled?
In the same way that they do now, which is off of Rutgers Court at the back of the site.
Have you reviewed Mr. Harris's report?
I have.
And do you have any comments with regard to that?
Well, do you want, I can go through them.
I think you should go through them, yes.
So I'm looking at the letter dated April 4, 2019, to the zoning board members from Mr. Harris. And I am gonna switch to page two and start with his site considerations. So, so his first site consideration is regarding the configuration of the proposed driveway on the eastern parking lot, which I've already addressed in that it's gonna be a one-way that's gonna need to be used coordinated amongst church activities. And when it's not in use, it will be gated off. We can put in signage, we can put in some convex mirrors to make visibility better. I haven't proposed much landscaping at all in here to keep the sightlines active. I can also demonstrate that an ambulance can come up this parking lot and maneuver through the parking area if need be.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
From the old plan, which was mentioned again by Mr. Stack.
Yes.
There was a two-way driveway on Academy going to that lot.
Right.
Why was that taken away?
Well, it's with the, essentially with the grade change that happens across Academy Street, the length of that driveway takes away from how much parking we can put in the parking lot. So trying to configure that driveway...
What if the other driveway was eliminated?
If this driveway was eliminated?
Mm-hmm.
It would still have to be a really long driveway to make it work. So we would lose parking spots. That's essentially the reason. It's to maximize the number of parking stalls that we can have.
Or you gained three by eliminating.
I would gain three here, but I think I would lose more here?
No, because originally it was 30.
It was 30 in this one? For the previous one?
30 spaces, proposed 33.
Okay.
So technically, if you eliminated one and kept everything on Academy...
Right, but we would then lose parking stalls on Academy, correct?
Well, whatever you used on Academy, you gain on the back.
So it would still be 33. I would get three here.
Well, I'm talking about to eliminate access for Rutgers Court.
Right.
Because that was one of the concerns the last time, was people coming through Rutgers Court and causing problems for residents on Rutgers Court. That they couldn't get out, they couldn't get out of the driveways.
I think that's a parking concern.
No, a parking concern directly caused by the church, I'm saying.
Right. But this parking stall will not be the only parking stall on the site. We're gonna have another 78 parking stalls.
I understand, but also, also in the original proposal, they were gonna have the library able to use that lot, which wouldn't be able to be used if there's no driveway from Academy.
That is true.
But there's no arrangement, the library used that lot?
No, originally there was.
Okay, but at this time, there is not.
Okay. So you're eliminating that, what was used, what was requested the last time or proposed the last time?
We have no, I have no knowledge of that person.
Well, I do, because I was here to hear the first case, whoever. I remember. We're not taking the final, just bring it up, what was proposed before, because they have proposed before, proposed now. That's all I'm saying.
That's not a part of his application.
Okay.
I think I actually walked through his item number three in response to item number two. So number three on his list is for everything on site to be designed to be... So number three on his list is for everything on-site to be designed to meet ADA standards. That is certainly going to happen. Item four is for everything in the public right-of-way to meet the Public Right-of-Way Access Advisory Committee guidelines or PROWAG, which is certainly going to happen. All the sidewalk cross slopes will comply with applicable building codes. Everything will be less than two percent. The proposed site layout includes the appropriate number of ADA parking stalls, and they will also be designed for code. So we have a grading plan showing the proposed grading of all of the accessible parking stalls, the accessible curb ramps, sidewalks, to demonstrate that everything will meet required grade elevations, the pitch and cross slope requirements for ADA. The structural calculations for the proposed retaining wall will be submitted to the building department. The existing dump derrick enclosures at the rear of the site, and that will be maintained in the back of the site. Slopes, access ramp, we can add those to the plan. The slope of the access driveways is about twelve percent into and out of the parking lot. The vehicle turning templates can be added to the parking garage in order to demonstrate car movements through the parking garage. We will add signage and mirrors to increase visibility. And item number thirteen is addressing the protection of the columns supporting the parking and the building above. My proposal would be to paint the columns a bright color and add bollards where we can fit them to the space. The next comments regarded stormwater management, which I have pretty much already addressed. I think that the only requirement was to add the hundred-year storm to my analysis, which I can certainly do, and if we need to increase the footprint of the infiltration system to satisfy the board engineer, we can do that as needed. As of now, my proposed peak outflow is essentially equal to the existing peak that's running into Academy Street, and like I said, I'm taking on the entire two-year storm event and infiltrating it on-site. The, excuse me, we can provide a profile of the proposed pipe connection. That's this pipe connection that he's talking about from the on-site system into the public storm sewer system, because it's a pretty big slope between there, so we're going to have to apply drop under the retaining wall and into the new system of the street. Under lighting and landscaping, I believe I've already addressed those, and under utilities, the proposed landscaping will respect clearances required by the utilities, and an underground utility workout will definitely be performed before we stick a shovel in the ground. We typically require that for all of our construction projects, private underground utility workout, not just the one in the small number.
So net effect, you're able to comply with the comments made in Mr. Harris's letter?
Yes, ma'am.
No further questions, as witnessed.
Members of the board, question?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Kendredine. The new building calls for two driveway openings, each twenty-seven feet in width, so total fifty-four feet will be lost along Academy Street, but at this moment, I just, I borrowed all the photos in case it's necessary. Your current building, also the house, one of the houses that you're going to be demolishing, there are two driveways already present on Academy Street, and I'm just eyeballing it. This is about probably thirty to thirty-five feet, so I'm looking at what the net change is going to be as far as on-street parking is concerned along Academy Street. You're putting in fifty-four, but you're also giving up at least thirty-five, probably about forty feet here, so it looks like maybe you're at most, you're probably losing one parking spot along Academy Street?
That sounds accurate to me, but I don't want to speak up terms. I can certainly address that with measurements.
If you have more precise numbers, I would like to know.
Yep.
But it just seems that, worst-case scenario, it looks to me like you're maybe losing one parking space along Academy Street.
The way it lines up, it might be more than that, though. I don't want to just go by the numbers, so I'll do the calculation on that.
You also mentioned that you did a quick study to make sure that an ambulance could enter the ground parking lot that is on the east side of this campus.
Yeah.
Did you do any calculations to see if it would be possible for a slightly larger vehicle, such as a fire truck or a bus, to be able to enter into that same ground parking lot?
No. I mean, I did an analysis, but the turning radius is too tight for a fire truck to get in.
That was my concern, that is a very constricted area.
Yes.
It's only, I think, the closest approach distance, it's only about twelve or thirteen feet there.
Right. This is, I mean, from what I understand, obviously I'm not a fire marshal and not a firefighter, but it's my understanding that they don't like to get that close to the building anyway, so the intent is for any emergency fire equipment to access the site off Academy Street or Rutgers Court.
On the second page of Mr. Harris's report, when it goes to site considerations, number one, the second paragraph of what was said, this driveway is only access to the thirty-three space. Parking lot is therefore expected to handle two-way traffic. However, based on the proposed width, will be unable to do so. We also have concerns with the ability of emergency equipment to access the area. Review and comments from the double fire department would be important regarding this matter. You just said no fire equipment can get in.
Correct.
Wouldn't it be a problem with an ambulance?
No, an ambulance can certainly access this driveway.
Okay. Oh, because I remember she said, that's why I'm going by the report here.
I can provide a template demonstrating that.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board?
We're going to wait, we're going to get the fire department's comments on, and we're going to send the flames to the fire department.
Okay.
Did George leave?
No, George is still here in the back hiding. That's one advantage now to the board, we have a former deputy chief on the board, so that could help, you know? Remember, you can participate, anything you want to say, whether you vote or not, don't worry about it, okay?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I'm sure, as you know, one of the historical problems with Academy Street is the fact that it's one-way, it's fairly narrow, and so I know some of the residents have had problems when there are buses outside the church, either patrons leaving or entering those buses. You're, with the three houses that you're going to demolish, your total street frontage now is about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy feet when I measured it using Google Earth. I just wanted to throw out a hypothetical, but did you give any consideration to possibly making some modest curb cut so that when the church is in operation, the buses could park on-street but not block Academy, such as what we did at one of our schools recently, at school number two?
Right.
We have a curb cut so that the buses could be off of Doralman without tying up traffic on Doralman. If something like that could be done for this project so that the residents in the area would no longer have to worry about buses impeding traffic flow for half an hour, an hour on end, if there could be some sort of...
I think you're losing parking.
I'm sorry?
You're losing parking.
Well, they would use parking, but I was thinking if there was some signage that during church operation hours, that area would be reserved for the buses, and then after hours, it would become, it would become available for the public.
How?
I don't know if, how, that's why I said hypothetically, I just wanted to throw...
Hypothetically.
It might be more complicated than I envisioned, but I just wanted to give that idea out.
Well, I don't know how often they use the buses. My takeaway from Father Luke's testimony was that it doesn't happen all that often. And now, the elevations along the frontage are pretty prohibitive where that's concerned. Trying to get a flat area that is at least ten feet wide off of Academy Street is going to be difficult. It's more, because I call them ripples, there's more ripples than you think. So you'd have to dig into the grade along the frontage, it would be pretty involved.
Yeah, I thought it was because of the grade, and you don't have that much space to begin with.
Yeah.
But you're talking this way, not this way.
Yeah, so, I mean, is it meter parking along the frontage?
No.
No?
That's another question that comes up with the other parking lot. If the driveway was on Academy, would the buses be able to pull into that parking lot if they can't pull in from Rutgers Court, because of the angle?
If they, well, we would have to make the driveway very wide for that to happen. So you need a radius...
Well, it was a two-way driveway to begin with.
Yes, but like these, these two driveways, there's, I don't think that a bus would be able to take them in.
No, a bus can't go in, I agree.
So if we were to make a bus-accessible driveway...
To the other parking lot.
To this parking lot?
Yes.
The curb cut would need to be something like sixty feet probably, at least. It would take away a lot of spots, because what you need is at least a like thirty-five-foot radius coming in.
Can you suggest any way that a bus can come down Academy and not cause chaos?
Not cause chaos. I don't know how your ordinances work. Is it some, is there some way to prohibit parking during certain times when buses will be, I mean, is there some way to arrange that ahead of time? That's the only thing I can kind of think of.
Well, I've seen it done. The question is, you know, can it be done?
Yeah.
When it happens to be done through the council, we don't have that authority.
Right.
Do you need for the bus to wait somewhere like...
But the bus is so animal.
And they can leave the bus there.
I don't know how often it happens, so I don't know how big a concern it is.
You were going to say something, or he was going to say something?
Well, there just isn't that much bus use. They're talking about having buses come to the site three or four times a year.
How many buses at a time?
I'd have to call the priest to answer.
Call the priest up so we can get this cleared up.
This is supposed to be an issue, I want to get it out of the line. It is an issue.
Father hasn't been sworn yet.
Yeah, okay, swam. Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear your testimony, swear or affirm, your testimony will be the church's? And could you state your name and spell both your first and last name?
Father Youssef Halim, Y-O-U-W-S-E-F.
Why are you...
H-A-L-I-M.
Father Youssef, there's been discussion about buses. How frequently do buses come to the site for some trip that the youth are taking or that the parishioners are taking? How frequently would that happen during the course of a year?
I would say like three, four times a year.
And would that be a full-size bus on those three or four occasions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it doesn't happen on Sunday service?
No.
Does it happen at Easter or Christmas or anything like that?
Sometimes on Sunday, the church will be coming back or leaving, but then we have the arrangements with the police department to park on Washington Avenue, to avoid parking on Academy.
Oh.
And actually inform them so that they arrange the place.
Washington Avenue.
In front of the house.
Please, please, no interruptions. You have a right to ask questions later of the gentleman, based on his testimony, okay?
Is that the only location that you have some type of agreement with the police department about?
Excuse me? All those buses?
Well, this was their arrangements, because they wanted to avoid having our parking on Academy, so this is what they prepared, what they...
That's what they suggested, and that's what's been done to date.
Right.
Is there a possibility that the buses can wait in a remote location, let's say for instance, like a big parking lot like Kmart, where the folks who are going on this bus trip are capable to get to that location and mount the bus there? In other words, is there, is it necessary for them to have to be picked up close to the church, that they can't be picked up somewhere else? Is there a reason why they have to be picked up there and they cannot be picked up, let's say somewhere like I said, in a Kmart parking lot, where there's plenty of room for the buses to sit there and wait for them to come to the buses and load them?
Because Kmart is nowhere in the vicinity of this church.
Right, that's what I'm asking, because it's not close, but can they get, is there some...
It's probably comforting, yeah.
No, no, but I'm just using that as, I'm just using that as an area where the buses can be parked within agreement, right?
Wherever they go, they have to park their vehicles to get to, so...
Well, that's why I'm saying, can, is there, is there anything preventing them from getting on these buses somewhere other than the church? Do they have to do it at the church, or can they do it somewhere else if that type of agreement can be made? That's my question. Does anything prevent the people from getting on the buses at the churches, or are they allowed to do it somewhere else if that was an arrangement that can be made?
Many times, they're like little kids, so for safety reasons, they have to be like close, even when they park on Washington, the police would be there to ensure the safety of the crossing of the street. So this is something related to the safety of the street.
So they would not be able to, instead of fall me at the church to get on the buses, be able to meet somewhere else and then get on the buses? It has to be done at the church?
Once they dropped off the trip, for example, they have to have a safe place to enter. I mean, they cannot just leave it inside the parking lot of Kmart.
So they go there, and then there's time between the time they've dropped off...
And then the parents would pick them up.
And then the parents would pick them up. As I was saying, they would not be able to drop them off at a set location where then they'd be able to mount the buses there and go, but it has to be at the church.
I think this is a safety issue that we can establish.
Well, I mean, I'm not talking about that they're going to be dropped off somewhere where it's not safe for them to be, but if they're in a location where they're able to be dropped off that is safe, they're able to mount their buses, the buses are able to leave, come back, lead the people in that area where they can be picked up again safely. Is there anything that's preventing that from happening? Does it have to be at the church?
I don't have any, like, suitable location to...
I'm not saying you have, I'm saying, is there anything that's stopping that from being a possibility?
The only thing I would point at is the logistics of that would be extremely difficult. First thing is, how, how do you get Kmart to allow you to put the buses there and then park all the cars and the people who get on the buses?
Well, the cars are not staying, they're dropping off the people and they're leaving, right? That's what he said.
I don't...
He said they drop off, they leave, and then they come back and pick up.
Yeah, but then if they drop them, they have to stay somewhere in a safe area until they go as a group into the bus, and then when the bus is dropping them off, they have to stay somewhere...
Yes, so I'm saying if the safe area exists, that's not Academy Street, and Academy Street is not approved, if that safe place exists, we would be able to...
The police do the Washington Avenue thing, so that they can go right there.
Yeah, but on Washington Avenue, you're blocking traffic. This is why I'm blocking the traffic.
But if the police are there, they're...
Whether the police are there or not, the traffic is still being...
That's the safest part.
If I may throw another issue into that, this conversation, the church's insurance is probably not going to cover them having their students dropped off at another location other than the church. Buses have to be able to access this facility.
I just want to add, it's always been my understanding that the bus traffic associated with the Coptic Church was much more intensive than just three or four times a year, that this was almost a weekly situation. I may be wrong, but that's what I've heard, I've gathered from some of the residents affected in the area. But as many of the board members, members of the public may know, there was an incident last year where the bus had stopped traffic. Video was taken, which went viral, the driver got out of the bus and apparently wanted a free public prostate exam, trousers and, you know, it was, I have to say, it was a video. The driver was outraged that he was being asked to move his bus.
That has nothing to do with the church.
No, he wasn't, but it was a separate, but the driver nevertheless, it was, it made the news, it made across the whole country.
It wasn't a tab, you know, I told him I hear.
No, but I'm just saying, it's been my impression all along that there's a lot of bus traffic associated with the church.
I know, but you linked the two together, what you did. You linked that incident together with...
Well, it just, it's a ramification of the fact that the residents in the area are apparently always beset by the blockages.
I understand the way it's been done, it was the other part.
They ask, they ask the drivers politely to move...
But that is, it was here, it was on Academy Street.
It was on Academy Street, right outside the church.
Associated with the church.
But it was a private company they hired, but nevertheless, the residents in the area are frustrated and always having to deal with this block.
I know the residents, but I was asked.
They ask politely, and often the drivers are, get I break, and they're asking, please move to the side so that they get through.
You should know, you experienced that the other day.
But I was, that was the...
Okay, I understand, it's the same bus driver, right?
Okay, but I mean, this is... Okay, but I mean, this is testimony by board members.
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead with the father if we're done? Most of you still have, uh, questions to respond to by the board.
And the public.
As of now, and Mr. Schwartz and the public, so yours might be very limiting, but, but, uh. All right.
Questions for the witness, please, by the board members of either witness. Don't, go away, Father, please.
Oh, I thought you wanted him to sit down.
He's, he's, he's not done yet, but he, he can sit down here.
No, he can stand.
We don't have to.
Okay, stand.
Questions by members of the public of either witness, based upon testimony. Yes, sir, give me a name and address. Oh, why, you want to talk first?
I.
Or you would like to talk first?
He should ask questions.
I'm new to the Belvedere Board of Adjustment. I don't know what time you intend to go to tonight.
Well, let's put it this way, we want to finish these two witnesses.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, then I have a couple of questions for both witnesses.
Okay.
I'll, I'll start with Father Youssef. Uh, Father Youssef, you testified that presently, with your facility as it is, there's three to four buses per year that, uh, are involved in church activities. Did I hear that correctly?
Three, four trips.
Three or four trips?
Sometimes it's two buses and sometimes it's four buses.
Okay. Uh, can you rule out the possibility that once a new facility of the type proposed were to open, that that number won't increase?
I mean, as Father Luke said, we're not expecting that the number of kids will increase or the number of, of, uh, I mean, the activities are the same. We're just doing the same activities.
But Father Luke also testified to there being a number of Coptic churches in the vicinity. Can you rule out the possibility that they will want to bus their students or even their adults to your new facility to use it on an occasional or regular basis?
I mean, this is not something that we discuss to anybody.
But, so you can't rule that out?
It's not planned. I mean, it's not intended to open for anybody.
But if I understood Father Luke's testimony correctly, and maybe you can help me here, the members of these new Coptic churches in the area, they originate with your church? And then they branch out?
Not all of them. Some of our congregation, because they live now closer to a new church, they prefer going there.
But, and now you're proposing this big, brand-new facility, a gymnasium, lots of classrooms, and these other Coptic churches that are newer may want to take advantage of that. You, you haven't decided, you haven't planned for that one way or the other?
No.
So you can't rule out the possibility that these three or four trips may become ten, twelve, twenty? Because it's outside people coming to your facility.
This is not something that we, we intend to do.
But you, are you saying you won't do it? Or you just haven't discussed it?
The, the point that these trips are not going to, uh, the specific Coptic churches. I mean, they, sometimes they go to the zoo, sometimes they go to the park. So increasing the number of the Coptic churches doesn't mean that the trips will.
Well, except that what we have now, that we, what we're gonna have, if you, if your application succeeds in the future, that we don't have now, is we have this new facility. And this new facility may attract other, members of other Coptic churches, your seed churches, people who were your congregants and moved on, to come back with groups to take advantage of your facility.
Uh, what I know is that each church is having its own facility and its own, uh, like, services, so they don't have, they don't need to come to our facility.
The Coptic churches in the area, do they participate in any inter-church activities? Uh, do the youth groups get together?
Not for the time being.
But maybe now with a.
Objection. He's answered the question. They don't participate with other churches.
Counselor, are you testifying now?
He's answered the question. You're laboring the issue. He's answered. Answered and answered.
I've actually asked it several different ways because there's different aspects of it. But I will, I will, I'm satisfied with the answer. Forgive me, I'm not turning my back on you, but I want to talk to the other witness. Ms. Kendrdine, I'm a little confused as to the whole traffic flow. Counselor, are you calling a traffic engineer? Or is this?
I may, she is not a traffic engineer, wasn't presented as a traffic engineer. I do not know if I would be calling a traffic engineer.
I, I'll ask my questions of her and, because that's who so far talked about how the parking situation is going to be. So if I understand the plan correctly, there are three, effectively, three independent parking lots here.
Correct.
There's the one on the east side. And then there are the two, one is on the lower floor, one is on above that with separate entrances.
Yes.
How are you planning to control the flow of traffic between and among the three?
Well, it's essentially, I think it's probably going to become, um, with a church congregation, um, the same people are coming to the church, the church at the same time and on a regular basis. So I think probably in the beginning, it will be a little bit of coming in here. If you don't find a parking spot, you're gonna have to go back out to Academy Street and go in the lower section or the upper section. I think there's gonna be a time in the congregation where it's probably gonna be, uh, like a, a learning curve, so to speak. So, um, essentially what I think is going to happen is that, uh, the same number of people will be coming into that, and then other people will be coming, will come used to using the parking garage.
Well, except as I understand it, the back entrance from Rutgers, from Rutgers is gonna be gated off.
Gonna be gated off, um, when it's not in use. So during, on Sundays, during Mass, it will be open to the, to the congregants for use.
And if a member of the public wants to, a member of the public comes down Rutgers may not know it's there, gated off or not. Uh, if somebody were to, if I understand correctly, if I'm reading your plan correctly, the gate is actually off the street.
Correct.
So a, in theory, a car could pull onto that drive.
Pull in here.
Yes, and now it's forced, would be forced to back up to get out.
That is correct. We can add signage, private parking, church parking only.
Well, but that doesn't help with a member of the congregation who is there properly.
Correct.
Who may or may not know whether or not the back parking lot is open.
That is correct.
Let's say one of the other two-hundred-and-twenty-five families who doesn't come on a regular basis. And has now come down Rutgers to find there's no parking, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and then you have the problem with Academy, which if I understand correctly, is a one-way street. Uh, so that if I pull into the furthest parking lot now and I go in and the thirty-eight spots are full, what do I do then?
You'd have to go around the block.
Yeah, so again, creating more traffic, uh, creating more hazards as I have to circle around in the parking lot. Uh, is there flow for circling in the parking lot?
Let me address that because the same kind of thing happens now, if I'm not mistaken. Except now that they're circling to find parking on the street. So it's the same amount of traffic flowing in the same direction, except now we're getting them off the street.
So your testimony is your parking plan should be accepted because it's not improving, but it's not making it worse?
The traffic flow?
Yes, that's what I thought I just heard you say. It's the same, it's going to be the same situation, is what you just said.
No, I said it's the same traffic flow.
Same traffic flow.
Same number of cars accessing the site.
Okay, except now we have two independent parking decks, which may or may not be full when I pull my car.
Correct.
And I won't know that until I pull my car.
Correct.
Uh, is there circular flow of traffic on each of those parking levels?
There is not, no.
So that if I pull in to find a parking space, I am going to come around a U and reach a dead end?
Correct.
And I'm again forced to back my car up?
You'd have to do a K-turn.
Uh, is there room to do a K-turn without, is the parking lot acceptable?
Yes.
You've done the measurements on it?
Yeah, you can do it.
Wait, what size cars?
A, a regular-sized car.
Define a regular-sized car.
Um, I, I use Ashdod templates, so I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
Okay, but for your templates, are we talking about Honda Civic or are we talking about an SUV?
Like I said, I don't know the length of it off the top of my head.
Okay, and you don't have, it's not on the plans?
It is not.
Okay. For, for the board, I'm gonna reserve any questions I have regarding the lack of access to the fire department until we've seen the report from the fire department. Uh, we, I have grave concerns about that, but I will hold those because we just don't have the information. Your parking plan presumes, if I'm reading it correctly, that a parent bringing a child for an activity is actually gonna park the car and bring the child in?
Yes.
Is there any, what, what happens to the parent who just wants to drop a child off?
They should park the car and bring their child in.
I have a fourteen-year-old I'm dropping off who's responsible enough to walk into the building. I still need to park because there's no ability to access the building to drive in, drop.
That is correct.
So let's talk about your cap. So how many parking spaces are you proposing?
Hundred and nine.
And how many parking spaces do you contend are required, based on the plan's essence?
One hundred and three.
Okay. Can you explain your calculation?
Yes, the calculation is on the cover sheet of the plan. Uh, it is based upon the existing house of worship. One parking stall per sixty square feet of seating area, which results in sixty-five-point-three parking stalls. The youth center is one stall per sixty square feet of seating area, which results in thirty-seven-point-two stalls. So the total required comes to one-oh-two-point-five, uh, to run it up to one-oh-three, if people don't drive half a car.
So is there activities going on in both the youth center and the church? And the east side outdoor parking lot is closed off, you have insufficient parking? By ordinance?
Yes.
Uh, you say for the youth center, one per sixty square foot of sitting space?
Seating area, yes.
Seating area. Uh, where did you get your, well, how many square feet are you basing it on?
Uh, I have two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet of seating area in the youth center.
And is that a number you calculated or one you were provided?
I was provided.
By whom?
By the architect.
And you were simply relying on the architect's measurements? So if the architect's measure is in error in any way, that's not on you, that's not on the architect. I gotta talk to the architect.
You should speak to the architect about square feet.
Are there any handicapped stalls planned for the outdoor parking lot?
Yes, two.
So two in the outdoor and two on each level?
Correct.
What kind of gate is planned for the Rutgers access? Is it an electronic gate? Is it gonna be, is it something that's gonna be opened by hand?
It's opened by hand, it's a double swing gate.
Is it gonna have a lock on it?
I believe so, yes.
Now, in terms of the setbacks and the height, uh, am I correct that you are merely reporting the facts based on the architect's design of the, of the structure?
Yes.
So you, you took the architect's measurements, compared them to the ordinance, and that's where your job ends?
Um, I believe I helped with, to determine the medium, median elevation along the side of the building based on the, the topographic survey.
But you're not the one who, uh, you didn't have any role in designing the building to make sure the setbacks were in any particular place?
Uh, I believe I set the building on the plan, um, lined up with the existing building. So I, uh, had a hand in determining the front.
Just the front. Can you just remind me of what the lot coverage numbers are, existing and?
Yes. The existing lot coverage is thirty-two percent and our proposed is forty-three percent.
And the standard, if I'm correct, is thirty-five percent?
Correct.
So you do need a variance for that?
Yes.
So you are actually going to be covering more space?
Yes.
Now, I know you talked about your water, uh, storage system.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, did you do any calculations based on water flow off of the new building?
Off of the.
Well, because right now, you've got a lot of open space where the new youth center is planning to go.
Correct.
Where there's now gonna be coverage where there wasn't before that.
Yes, I included that in my calculations.
You included that in your calculations?
Yes.
Which way the water is gonna flow off of that building?
Yes, there's gonna be roof leaders that will attach to the system that's connecting into the street.
So that, all that water is, your testimony is, will go into your storage system?
Not for the new building, no.
So the new building, any water on the new building will go onto the street?
It will go into the, the new public storage system that we're building in Academy Street, yes.
So you're saying that all that water is gonna be captured off the roof?
Yes.
And go directly into the sewer?
Yes.
Now, the open space requirement is thirty-five percent?
Um, yes.
You're currently at thirty-eight percent?
Twenty percent.
You're currently at twenty percent?
Uh, currently, so excuse me, at thirty-six percent.
So currently, you're, you're in the green, uh, so to speak.
Well, yes, that they are.
Right, but now you're looking to go fifteen percent or less, right?
That is correct.
And that is based all on the size of the new proposed youth center, correct?
And the new parking, right, yes.
Well, but that's, okay. And the same with impervious coverage?
Correct.
That's all based on the fact that you're gonna be going up from sixty-four percent to eighty percent on impervious coverage is due in large part to the large building that's being proposed to the youth center.
Correct.
Right, whereas now, there are several residences and, uh, impervious space. There's grass, there's yards.
Yards, dirt, gravel.
But still pervious, not, not a structure, not cement.
Correct.
That's all I have for the moment, thank you.
Questions by, uh?
One follow-up question. I, I don't know whether my, my question, what I'm about to ask is appropriate for Ms. Kendrdine or the architect, the architect when he or she speaks. But, um, in addition to having all these 2D plans, would it be possible, based on what you already have in file, to, to make a, a digital 3D rendering of how this proposed building will look? I, I've done this in other instances, using things like SketchUp and Trimble and imported into Google Earth, and that allows you actually to see how a new building will look in the existing neighborhood. You can also do things like have sun, do the sun move, and you can see the shadows that are being cast by the building throughout the day. Uh, but how, I think it would help, at least with, for me, when we get to the negative criteria for this application, to see actually how this building is going to look in this, this neighborhood and how it, it plays with the existing structures. And, and I know it's a very simple thing, and when I, when I've done this for other non-zoning board matters, I mean, within an hour or so, you can quickly, using SketchUp, produce. I'm not looking for an elaborate model, but just a, a, a crude 3D rendering. If you could bring it into something like Google Earth and make a few printouts to show us how your building will look in the existing neighborhood. I don't know if it's something you need to do or the architect?
I believe you have something somewhere.
I have something.
Because the architect has something, so during his testimony.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm looking at AO1.
That is the architectural plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the reason you can't go in a circle to get out of the garage without a stager? Is because there's a staircase in an elevator at the end, and that's right next to the entrance door. My point is this, we have all this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
We have all this wasted space here, so you can see it better on this.
In here?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the white, the white area between the two blacks under the bay, okay?
Yes.
All right. Why can't the staircase in the elevators be moved to the back part of this, where the entrance foyer is, so that way cars can go around and go right back out? Instead of having to do a K-turn in the garage, which I think is totally ridiculous? so that way cars can go around and go right back out, instead of having to do a K-turn in the garage, which I think is totally ridiculous? If you eliminate the staircase and the elevators and move them here at the back of the foyer, you don't, you have enough space to go around, and nobody has to do a K-turn. What happens when you have cars to go in, everybody's following one, following the other, let's follow the leader, and now they're all backed up? How are you gonna get K-turns like that? It's ridiculous, it's the most ridiculous plan I ever saw. But if you eliminate this, you don't have enough space to go all the way around and go right back out the way you came in.
So you're suggesting that we put the elevator in this corner here?
The elevator in this, that's listed as white on here.
Okay.
Between the two buildings. There's no reason to have a foyer going in and out from both sides, okay? Also, there should be a way, since Academy's on one way. And that was back to my thing about having the driveway to the other parking lot on Academy. That when you come down Academy, you could have a sign or whatever that says garage filled, they go right to the next one. Otherwise, you come out, they're gonna go all the way around the block, it causes nothing but chaos.
Okay.
You go down, this part of the garage is full, you go to the next driveway. That gets full, you go to the next driveway. And they're all on Academy, and they all go in and out.
Okay.
And nothing has to worry about traffic on Rutgers Court. We don't have the residents of Rutgers Court having a heart attack and everything else. And it solves the problem. But it doesn't take a genius to figure this out. Because doing K-turns in a garage is ridiculous. Especially if you have people backed up behind you. Now, how do you do the K-turn? They're behind you. This way, you go around the circle, it's full, you go right out, and you go to the next one. That gets full, you go out, and you go to the outside parking lot. You can't have any chaos that way, in my opinion. Of course, I've been known to be wrong before, but I don't think I'm wrong this time.
It's certainly something we can take a look at.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the board?
Yes, with the ground, the outside parking lot, that's going to be at some elevation above the street level. So if you were to try to give, grant access from Academy Street to that ground-level parking lot, you would have a driveway with a really significant slope.
20% slope.
20%, 20%.
But it was there the last time.
Significant slope.
That's my point, they took it off on this one, before it was there. And that way, you don't have the problem of people going around the block, people bothering other people's driveways and everything else. You go from one to the other, to the other, in order.
Is 20% permitted, or is that considered too great a slope for civil engineering purposes?
That's a pretty steep slope.
It's a pretty...
Yeah, I mean, well, we can make it less steep, but it just means for a longer driveway.
That's all.
And I think with the last one, what we ended up doing was having, we had a pretty high retaining wall right next to the building. I think that was the, that's the objection.
Well, that has to be done, that has to be done. The thing is, not to have all this confusion in the neighborhood, and have, now, let's say people start going to the back, and they start parking there, now that lot's full, okay? The idea is to avoid confusion. If you're going from one parking lot to the other, or one parking level to another, it avoids confusion. That's all I'm saying. This is all confusion, and not only that, if they have to get an emergency vehicle in, they can get in from Academy into that parking lot, the outside one I'm talking about, maybe even a fire engine, they need to take. You understand what I'm saying?
A big incline like that, you probably can't get a fire truck there. I don't think that you'd be able to get a truck. Not, I mean, not according to the templates that I work with, but I've seen fire trucks and things.
Fire trucks go up Rutgers Street, don't they? And nothing is as steep as Rutgers Street. That's a one-way going up the hill, not down. Of course, I could ask, our deputy chief will be here.
I can't hear you back there. Can he, can he move up a little? I can't hear him.
Thank you. Yeah, say something.
Thank you.
On the pumppers and on the ladder? But not with the pumppers? Okay, so pumppers can get off, the ladder can't?
But they ain't gonna bring the pumper that close to the building anyway.
Well, the ladder, they would raise, they would, from the street. Oh, yeah. But I mean, on the pumper, the pumper, they wouldn't be raising the pumper, they would raise the ladder from the street, from Academy, probably. That's not a sound.
Yeah, and too, is I don't know if it's possible, now, but even if you put the driveway in Academy Street, all the talk we had about buses before, maybe the buses could use that parking lot, pick up and drop off.
She's saying, she's saying that it would take 60 feet curb cut to do that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a larger curb cut than you think. Trying to get a bus, a full-size bus around that corner, announce the driveway.
It's not like you can go wide, you're like, kinda make a tight turn, I don't know.
And then it would be wide to get out, because they don't even go one way.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly put together a sketch showing what it would look like, but it's, it would probably have to be at least 60 feet wide, the curb cut. And we have the same issue with the elevation change, with the back of the bus scraping, going up the driveway. Yes.
I'm concerned about all the problems that people have on Academy, and also the ones who have a problem on Rutgers Court. And to have this plan where you expect people to do K-turns in a garage, now, I don't see that working at all. That's why I said, move the stairs in the elevator to the back of that area that's not even being used. And at least that way, you have enough space for the cars to go around the circle, I mean, it's filled, you just go out. That's one. Then you go from one to the other, to the other, no confusion, no going around the block. That's all, that's all I have to say, by the way. Okay, any other members of the board have a question? Any members of the public have a question of either witness? Yes, Mr. Frantatoni, I'm gonna give him a chance. Come on up, Mr. Frantatoni. Who do you want to talk to?
Yeah, me.
Okay, well, maybe you want to talk to the father?
You said that you had the, the little storm system all the way up to Washington. Is that sanitary or is it...
Storm, that's a storm sewer.
A storm sewer, but you're still gonna, dump heads are existing storm sewer on Washington there.
Correct.
Then they have to the valley. But that, the target is covered, it is going to be increased, so you're gonna produce more, go more into the system, all right?
That is why we're proposing a storm water management system, to mitigate that increase in runoff. So we're gonna detain some of that runoff on the site, so that we are not impacting the public storm sewer system with an increase in runoff.
A detention basin, or a retention?
It's retention, an underground retention basin.
Retention, and when does your retention begin to occur?
It will, it's designed to take all of the runoff from the new parking lot on the east side of the building, and it's gonna infiltrate the entire two-year storm event, so it'll start to overflow when the tenured storm event occurs.
The other question I think the chairman brought up too, about the, the, one garage is gonna access from Rutgers Court.
The surface parking lot is gonna access from Rutgers Court.
From Rutgers Court?
Correct.
But if it's backed up, if it's full, they have to back out into Rutgers Court, and all that. Are you aware, how recently have you toured the area?
Uh, April.
Are you aware that the Little Walgreens is gonna open this week, and they have a driveway entrance annexed in on Rutgers Street, right across from Rutgers Court?
I was not aware of that.
All right, that's gonna reduce more traffic out there. Do you know how wide Academy Street is?
Yes. It is 32, looks like, somewhere in there. 32 feet, approximately, I'm scaling that up.
I have the road inventory report of, of, it's actually 30 feet.
Okay.
But the parking on both sides is allowed over there.
Okay.
If there was a fire in this three- or four-story building, the ladder trucks need to put their outriggers out to stabilize the truck. Cars parked on both places, is that possible?
I don't know the answer to that question, we're gonna have to discuss that with the fire official.
Okay, I think that's for now, thank you.
Oh, yes, name it out of this one.
Alex, Espiral 144, Academy Street.
And who do you wish to ask questions of?
I'd like to speak with this gentleman, hi, how are you?
Okay.
Have you made provisions for non-church members who block Academy Street? In other words, Sunday morning when church members are coming down to fill up on your nine parking spaces, what do you do in a situation where the street is already blocked on Academy? How would you accommodate a flow of traffic if the street was already blocked?
Why is it already blocked?
Non-church members coming down, picking up people, parked on both sides, no, these are, it's not just the church that's there. There's, there's people, there's life, you know, people pay taxes and live there. I'm just curious, what provisions have you made in the event that the street is already blocked, and now you've got a total of 109 cars, may not be 109, you got 50. Now you're just adding to the existing, park, to the existing problem while they're waiting to get into this new building.
Talk about people double parking?
Yes.
Obviously, you have to call the police department and have it be moved, you can't, no, we can't make a provision for that.
Well, what do you do in that situation, as a zoning board? Do I need to call the police? Do you need to call the police? Do the police need to be on site? What, what is made, what?
Well, if the church needs to call the police, they can call the police.
So if I gotta get out of my driveway, I have to wait for a cop car to come down? If I gotta go to the hospital?
Why, why can't you get out of your driveway?
Several reasons.
Well, if you have cars that are double parked on the street, then of course you have to call the police.
But I have to wait.
If they're blocking your driveway.
But I have to wait, so now you're adding another 109 cars to the existing problem.
Let me explain something to you. I've never seen a person have to wait a long time when you call a cop in bulk.
No, I do, I do, I do, I called the police, they never showed up, never showed up, never showed up.
Then I suggest you say something to the police chief.
I have. Couldn't get out of my driveway, they never showed up. And you know what the excuse was? There's only three cars in the town, and they're all on another call. That's what their excuse was. They only got three cop cars, I don't know how much taxes people pay here, three, that's all they had, and they couldn't come. So I had, I was forced, trapped in my house, because the church decided they needed to have a bus. And not just one bus, two buses.
On Academy?
On Academy. In the middle of the night, while we're trying to sleep. So what provisions are being made to keep the street clear when non-church members are there? So whether she makes it, you make it, the police department makes it, I don't care who makes it, I'm asking you what provisions, just like you wanna have these stairs moved, I wanna have these cars moved. What's gonna be done about that?
Well, since we're gonna have a representative, apparently, of the fire department coming here, we could also have a representative of the police department come here, we had that the last time.
And he testified that, in his capacity as a representative of Bellevue New Jersey Police Department, he refers to the membership as targets, when asked about terrorists.
There was also, there was also testimony on how to handle security, I remember that. But this is now, a case like that case never got heard, so we would have to have a police department representative and a fire department representative, and if I have to, I will go to both chiefs and ask for a representative to come for the board. I have no problem doing that.
And I don't have one either.
I'm glad you're happy with it.
I'm happy, but as far as she's concerned, what's gonna be done to offset that?
She is not, she's not a traffикator, she's not testifying as a traffикator.
But she's testifying as far as...
I, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I'm sure, once the fire department and the police department representative comes here, we can work something out. I have no problem working something out with the police or fire department. And you never know, you might be surprised.
I might be surprised.
Yeah, you might be surprised, it might resolve your problems for you.
That would be a surprise, if you could resolve my problem, that would be a surprise.
I have no problem. All right, any other member of the public? You have to, listen to me.
Okay, that's fine.
Listen to me.
No.
We get done with all the experts, and then the public can give testimony, and you can provide those pictures at the time you wish to give testimony.
I understand.
Is that satisfactory?
More, more than that.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who wish to question either witnesses? None, then, Mr. Gashion, I think that'll be the end of this case tonight. I think you requested a special meeting? No, I did not. You did not request a special meeting? So there will be no request for a special meeting?
Can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
I don't, obviously, I don't want to offer testimony here, but I just want to, just want to point out that it is my understanding that the Bellevue Board of Education allows the Catholic Church and any other community organizations to use the middle school parking lot on weekends, when the school is not in session, or whatever, whatever purpose, if the board is totally indemnified, there's a sign saying, park at your own risk, the board is not responsible for any personal or vehicular damage, but Dr. Tomco, Mr. Gashion, or others can get an official response from Dr. Tomco, if they're so inclined. But the middle school parking lot is made available to the church or the Eastern College on the corner, but there is that other area.
Is there some written agreement here that I know, I don't know about?
That's what I'm saying, you might, Mr. Gashion, or others might want to get some official letter from Dr. Tomco, but it's my understanding that he and the board have previously given that permission to all outside organizations, it's just not the church.
Mr. Gashion, can you go?
If it's any other organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Gashion, now made aware of that. Any other, what, yes, sir, what was the...
With regard to Mr. Sheldon, is that forever? What if the school closes, would that parking lot be made available to them?
Nothing is ever forever, but...
Nothing is forever.
But the, the school's been in place now for over 100 years, so...
Let's say it burns down tomorrow.
I hope not, because we're spending $700,000 this year running it.
Sir, 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 let me make this easy for you.
I just want to know, is that gonna be forever?
Let's say there's a change in the board membership, and they decide to eliminate that policy.
Now what?
Okay, that's it, that's what I'm talking about. That, that is only, as far as they're allowing it now, they could always change their policy at any time. Unless there's a written agreement, that would be a violation of a contract, okay?
So, that, his, his point is moving.
That's it, it's over, that's the end of it. End of it. All over, we're adjourned this case to our next meeting on July 10th, 2019. There will be no further notices in the newspaper or in the mail. Now we have cases to be memorialized. Quiet, please, we're still doing business.
Resolution of oralization, matter of Human Realty, 57 Ralph Street, application to be made, 2019, oh six.
Quiet, please! You wanna talk, talk in the hallway, please, thank you.
You wanna talk, talk in the hallway, please, thank you.
Bennett.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Caruso.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Lozoff, yes. Valana.
Yes.
Delversio.
Yes.
Matter of George Gonzaga, Gonzaga, sixteen Quicken Street, application CP two thousand nineteen oh one. Bennett.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Lozoff, yes.
Yes.
Matter thirty-two thirty-four, Temple Street, LLC, application CP two thousand nineteen oh three. Bennett, yes. Caruso.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Lozoff, yes. Sheldon.
Yes.
Valana.
Yes.
Delversio.
Yes. That's it? Party's over. Vote to adjourn. So move. Adjourn.